Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, August the 19th Board of Commissioners Meeting. We call the meeting to order, and at this time I have the pleasure of introducing George Laurie for a invocation. George, welcome this evening.
Welcome. Hi, everybody. I always want to thank the Dare County Commissioners for allowing members of the North Dare Ministers' Association to open each meeting with a prayer. This is the sixth time I've been asked to give the opening prayer, and it is always a privilege. I've been the lay leader of the Jewish community of the Outer Banks for over 15 years. As a retired engineer, I became the lay leader because I was apparently the only person in our small community who had the ability to lead a Jewish service. It appears to be easy to participate, but much more difficult to lead. I'm not a rabbi, and I definitely don't have what it takes to preach like Spots or Father Tom or others in our ministers group. But in 71 years, I've learned that Almighty God created us in His image, pronounced 613 commandments to us, of which most of us are familiar, with the first 10, and suggested that we treat one another as we would wish that person to treat us. I've met many non-Jews on the Outer Banks and note that we now say to each other too frequently, "What would Jesus do?" I'm sure that God also realized that as human beings, we are all imperfect, and as Americans, we love to be a winner, hate to be a loser, and cannot fathom the concept of a tie. As a Jew, I tend to be liberal, but as a human being, I like ties because I know I cannot always win. Consensus is a good thing. Give and take is a good thing. Listening to others is a good thing. Exhibit a level of grace and decency in your speech. If you show respect to your fellow human beings, they will show respect to you, and you will gain their support. In politics, such actions result in win-win scenarios. That is what leaders do, and I applaud all of you, past and present, for trying to do right by the Outer Banks. So let us pray. Holy One of blessing, we thank you and sing your praises for our lives, which are in your hand, and for our souls, which are in your keeping. You are goodness; you are compassion; you have always been our hope. Soften our hearts and open our minds. Grace us with your light when our path grows dark, with your strength when we grow weary, and with your support when we falter and all resolve. King of the universe, you have sanctified us with your commandments and commanded us to do your work for the betterment of the Outer Banks. Be with these commissioners and others who served Dare County on a daily basis. Guide them and all our citizens to realize that we are all equal in the eyes of this Almighty God. May this be God's will, and let us say amen.
Amen.
I thank you, and have a blessed day.
Thank you, George.
Blessing 2009.
May we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
Before we get started, item one, I'd like to recognize that we have Superintendent Halleck with us tonight. Superintendent Halleck, thank you for being here this evening, Park Service. Commissioner Couch will be here. He had a prior commitment, and he's on the way now and should be here shortly. County Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you. Y'all bear with me this evening. I've got, it's been a couple of busy two weeks. I know our commissioners, all are involved in different things going on throughout the community, but I had the privilege of taking a group of residents from Spring Arbor, where my 93-year-old mother is living now, over to the EOC building recently. And most of those, I think the youngest group person in that group was 88-years-old, and we took them over there, and our emergency director, Drew Pearson, did about an hour tour, and they were just totally taken back with that facility and the capabilities of that facility. One particular lady, Ms. Mary Utz, was in communications in Arlington after she served time in the United States Navy. And I usually visit my mother, try to visit her at least once a day at Spring Arbor, and every time I'm over there, Mary is greeting me at the door, saying, "When are we going back?" So it was right down her alley. She loved every minute of it, being a communications person. But I want to personally thank Drew Pearson for allowing me to take those folks over there and share with them what an unbelievable facility we have throughout Dare County to supply all the necessary needs that we need emergency-wise. Commissioner Ross.
Yes, sir.
Schuster conquers Hope Valley, this goes around. Unbelievable.
Get in now. Line up to sponsor her. She's an amazing female.
It's unbelievable. Once again, folks, once again, another week, another win from the First Light Rising Junior, Katherine Schuster. She came home with another trophy this past week, and she won the Hope Valley Junior Invitational Golf Title in Durham, and she won it by eight strokes, eight strokes, over the closest competitor. So, once again, this young lady is somebody to be, to watch. Just phenomenal career, as young as she is, and just doing a wonderful job for First Also, this past week, the 10th Annual Surfing for Autism Day was another huge hit. I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but it was started by a group of parents who were surfers, and they wanted their autistic children to experience riding a wave and, you know, just being with family. And the Outer Banks surfing community, of course, helped them do that, and that was just, once again, another successful day. The kids just get to be kids, and they take pride, and the parents, of course, take pride in the fact that their autistic child can participate in such a wonderful event. I have a mayor's luncheon meeting once a month, just like the county manager has town manager meetings with all the municipalities once a month. And one of the major topics that this board will certainly address once again this evening, along with the mayors, is essential housing. I don't like to use the word affordable any longer, so I'm using the word essential housing for our teachers, our firefighters, our police, our workforce. And so we had some lengthy discussion at lunch. Each one of those mayors are talking to their councils and trying to do exactly what this board is doing, and that's maybe ease some restrictions to create some essential housing for those folks throughout our community. So we'll be dealing with that a little bit later. Our planning director will be talking with us, and I will have some suggestions to the board with respects to setting a meeting for us to do a workshop to take it to the next level after we discuss some things that we do tonight from our planning director and our planning board. Commissioner Tobin, what is it, 36-year Billfish Tournament?
Yes, sir, 36.
36, 36 years, August the 13th through the 15th, and that's Pirate's Cove Billfish Tournament I was talking to you about. 36 years ago, seven teams, seven teams. Jim, am I right to say that was over 70?
71 votes.
71 votes. That's incredible.
104 votes in the Alice Kelly Tournament.
Yeah. Unbelievable. That's all ladies tournament that he's referring to there. That was the 14th through the 16th. I had the pleasure of going over there last Friday evening and watching some of those votes come in and talk to some of those folks, and just an incredible, incredible tournament. It was just not, but a few years ago, Jim, where we were concerned getting any boats in here because of the situation with the inlet. So this is fantastic news that those outsiders are not reluctant to come into the inlet any longer. And so hats off, Jim, to a successful Billfish Tournament last week. That's good stuff, and that brings in a lot of revenue, a lot of revenue. I had the privilege of attending Dune Day. I don't know if many of you are aware of what Dune Day was, but that was August the 14th. Now, I'm a history buff, and I love history. The Friends of Jockey Ridge, which is a local nonprofit group, is dedicated to preserving and enhancing Jockey Ridge Park, of course, and they celebrated Carolista Baum's birthday that same day. Most of you are probably aware that Carolista, I don't know, it was back in 1973, a bulldozer started to bulldoze the backside of Jockey's Ridge, and she goes running out there and says, "Wait a minute, wait a minute, timeout," and kind of got on the operator's case, so he stopped. So he said, "Well, I'll be back tomorrow." Well, he came back the next day, and sure enough, he couldn't crank that bulldozer because she'd taken the distributor cap off the top of the bulldozer to keep it from running. Scientists believe, of course, that hurricanes and storms and future, I mean, prior years, offshore shoals created Jockey's Ridge, and as you most know, it served as a landmark. They used to take the old nag with the lantern, you know, the old pirates used to do that just to draw the ships to shore, and once they ran aground, they would certainly confiscate the cargo. But prevailing northeast winds now in the summertime keep the hills in place. The elevation has shrunk. It used to be about 90 to 140 feet, but over the last century, it's going down to about 90 feet. This is an interesting statistic. 30 million tons of sand. I think we're going to talk about sand very shortly, Donna, when Donna comes up here, about sand ordinance, but 30 million tons of sand at Jockey's Ridge, largest living sand dune on the East Coast. And that's pretty darn inspiring, if you ask me. The constant breezes on the windswept shores of the Outer Banks keeps it moving southwest. It moves about three to six feet per year. Most of you are probably aware, you saw all the dump trucks this summer, prior to the summer, hauling a lot of that on the south side off because it was encroaching residents' homes, so they had to move that. You know, there's been all kinds of stories about how Jockey Ridge was named, but in 1953, the U.S. Geological Survey shows the hill was named Jackie's Ridge, and legends say, you know, locals gathered there to watch the jockeys race banker ponies in that day. Carolista's daughter, Ms. Anderson, remembers that her mother set up a watermelon pink hut along the road to save our, and put up a sign up that said, "Save Our Dunes," and had bumper stickers and honorary one-foot squares of the ridge that she was selling for $5. And she did that in 1973, and after her persistence in 1975, it was, it became a state park, and all because of her efforts and just sets us apart. It's part of our history. There's a lot of things about, "Nine Things You Didn't Know About Jockey's Ridge," and some of them say there's a hotel buried under it. Most of you know there's a putt-putt that keeps showing its face every now and then, and just multitudes of different things that locals talk about that are history there. And so I had the privilege of going there the other day and watching that ceremony, and it's, once again, a part of our history, and I was proud to participate. And then the last thing I have is, Vice Chairman, as being on the vistas, Vera, and you've mentioned this a number of times, the governor released the 2018 record spending reflected in all 100 counties of North Carolina, all 100 counties, $25.3 billion. That's record visitor spending in 2018, and that was statewide. An increase of 5.6% from 2017. State tax receipts as a result of visitor spending was $1.3 billion in 2018. Local tax revenues directly resulting from visitor spending totaled $776.4 million. Visitors expenditures directly supported more than 230,000 jobs and generated more than $6.3 billion in payroll income across the entire state. Now Mecklenburg is number one, received $5.68 billion, and Wake County was number two at $2.4 billion. Guilford County was number three at $1.49 billion. Balcom was number four at $1.21 billion. And Vice Chairman Ovum, we've talked about this in the past, we always said we were going to probably hit another $1.2. Dare County was number five at $1.2, $1.19, you might as well say $1.2 billion in visitor spending. So, folks, that's good stuff. When you say, when you say the entire 100 counties throughout the state set records, I mean, that's incredible. It tells you, it tells you what we have in North Carolina that brings the visitors here. You know, from the mountains to the ocean, we've got, you can ski in the wintertime, you can, it's just all kinds of things out west you can do. Then you, pristine beaches, as most of you know, we rank number five in the United States in pristine beaches, engineered pristine beaches. So all of this is good stuff. This is our economic engine, and we talk about it all the time, and we need to continue to ensure that we have a pristine beach for our visitors to come and keep this economic engine rolling. So great numbers, great numbers for the state. So County Manager, that completes my comments.
Chairman, item two on the agenda is a zoning amendment public hearing that was advertised for 5:30. With your permission, we'll skip that and come back to it closer to 5:30 and move to number three on the agenda.
Now be fine. Is that a pleasure of the board?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, item three on the agenda is a time for public comment. If you have public comment and you've not signed up, please raise your hand. When you do, I'll recognize you. Please then come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. There's a light on the podium. The green light will tell you that your time has begun. The yellow light will tell you when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. The time that you have allotted to you to speak is five minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak at public comment? I have no hands, no signups. Is there anyone in Buxton that would like to speak at public comment?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we move on to item four on the agenda, and Donna Crease is going to handle items four and five.
Donna, welcome this evening.
Yes, sir. Item four is the report on the Buxton-Frisco pathway project. Several years ago, we received a planning grant from North Carolina Department of Transportation to help identify the alignments of the 7.6-mile section of the Hatteras Island pathway, which is in Buxton and Frisco, and we, that was a $100,000 grant. The matching funds for that were raised by the communities of Buxton and Frisco. It didn't cost the county anything, and we have the consultant here tonight who's going to do a PowerPoint presentation on the results of that plan. After he finishes his report, there is a resolution in your packet for your adoption of us to accept the plan. Once it's accepted, it will be moved forward to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Before the gentleman from VHB, the consultant hired by North Carolina Department of Transportation, Brian Edwards, gets up here and does his presentation. I would be remiss if I did not recognize and thank the participation of the partners that we had during the development of this plan. We had an administrative committee that was myself and the folks from VHB and local expert on pathways, Mary Helen Goodlow Murphy, and I can assure you that this plan would not have happened without Mary Helen's invaluable assistance throughout this. Thank you so much. And we also had other local committee members from the Outer Banks National Seaside Byway on the steering committee. We had folks from DOT. Mr. Brooks Braswell is here for DOT tonight, and we also had Superintendent Halleck. I don't know if he wants to come up and speak. He and his staff participated in the steering committee, and the other partner was K. Patteras Electric Membership Corporation, and they had folks from their staff that participated on the steering committee. And so I don't know if you wanted to say anything, Superintendent, or...
Thank you, Donna. Pleasure to be here. I just want you to know that we support this project, the Park Service does, for several reasons, but the two most important ones, of course, are that this would be beneficial for the community and visitors on Hatteras Island. The second reason is we really hope that this bike path, once it's finally built out, merges with a bike path or a multi-use pathway that we plan to build, starting at the entrance to the Lighthouse District that would go all the way into the Lighthouse, down by the Old Lighthouse Beach, and provide a safer, more enjoyable way for the public to go and visit their national seashore. That project is completed conceptual design. We're hoping to do some more detailed design and then seek funding, but this is a great opportunity, and we really thank Donna and VHB for the great work and the collaboration. It's so nice to have the opportunity to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave.
So that being said, I'm going to sit down and have Brian come up here, and he's going to do his presentation, and then if you have any questions of him or myself, we'll be glad to answer them. And again, that resolution is the action item tonight.
Okay, right here. I'm just pointing at the screen. Okay.
Welcome this evening, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out. As Donna said, we had local support throughout the process, and I'd like to thank everyone that did help, some are here tonight, some are not, but all right. Okay, so Dave's presentation will go over the purpose of this plan, the process of the planning that we went through it, the proposed concept that the team developed, our opinion to cost based on local DOT pricing and potential phasing should full funding not be available at the time. So the purpose of this feasibility study was to establish some constraints and opportunities along the corridor, and then to come up with costs to connect the Frisco and Buxton community with 7.6-mile trail. We developed initial pathway concepts as far as cross-sections alignment, and we helped document challenges along the way and how to overcome those challenges. With that, we refined the pathway concept. We had an open house meeting, and then we developed planning-level opinions of cost process. So as Donna mentioned, we had administrative committee. We had bi-weekly calls, discussed the project, and kind of moved it forward, and then we had initially scheduled four steering committee meetings, but it turned into six because stakeholder meeting number two. But the first one, VHB, we came out, me and Timothy, who was the original project manager, we walked the site for two days, we collected data, talked to citizens along the corridor who all were in support of this pathway, and then we went back and we kind of synthesized what was some constraints along the corridor, which there are some constraining corridors through Buxton, but we have plans to meet that. The second meeting, we came forth, we had suggestions for kind of cross-sections, and we went over a design matrix, and we sat down with a large map and just kind of decided which side of the path needed to be for various sections. Third, we refined the alternatives, and we went trade-offs, back and forth about what kind of concepts and where to put a path, and that's also the time we had to open house. We had people come out, get their suggestions, particularly on the phasing of the project. And then the final step was the draft plan. It went through three or four rounds of revisions, and hopefully the final draft is right here for you today. So steering committee one, like I said, we identified objects of review, we identified safety or environmental concerns and restraints, such as wetlands and other, we'll get that out later. Meeting number two is when we first got through, we set through the alignment. We set mostly from Frisco to the school, and because of the complexity of the section through Buxton, we tabled that for the next meeting, which was in January. We had some discussions. We developed concept-level plans. We went to local businesses to get their input, and then we reconvened in February, and we finalized the alignment through Buxton. And on the March meeting, we brought forth the concept plans along with preliminary opinions of cost. We went through the opinions of cost. We talked about some miles to throw in, throw out, and then we finalized the local-provided concepts. And meeting number four, which is six, is here today presenting you the report. So some key human environmental challenges. The topography, it's relatively flat, so ADA compliance shouldn't be concerned. There were some floodway floodplains, which will have to be bridged, and some wetlands along the way, which will add some cost and need some boardwalk to cross. There's some threatened endangered species in Dare Island that will need to be investigated as far as the detailed design. Rideaway width was around 60 to 130 feet. There are several secondary road intersections that will need to be crossed. The average daily traffic was around 5,000 to 10,000. Various landowners that utilize the rideaway for parking and driveway access in certain zones like that, which we will address later. And then there's some state historic preservation sites which connect to and make the community more walkable and more accessible. Eight cemeteries identified along the way, but we've avoided all of those along the corridor. And then there's public utilities on both sides of the road, so there really is no way to avoid those, but they're deep enough and the land's level enough, you shouldn't miss most of the water lines. So the proposed concept was, given it was such a long corridor, we broke it up into 10 phases. Phase one was from the Frisco bushouse to the Frisco Town Limits. That was set because that was a speed limit of 55, and then it transitions to the 45, so that higher speed kind of pulling it more off the roadway. Two was the Village Limits to Billy Mitchell Road, that's provide access to the national seashore and the camping ground and the airport, so that seemed like a good place to kind of make a breaking point. Then we went from there to Lovely Lane. I believe that's where a speed change occurs. Then Central Drive, because that was kind of a central corridor along that stretch. North Buccaneer Drive was selected because of the large AD traffic coming out of that neighborhood communities. Old Dr. Road, because the access to the Buxton Backwoods, then to the school. We broke up the school pathway just so it can have better access for the community at that school. And then it was kind of broken up between Buxton at the two sections between the crossroads. So the alignment choice was, we decided Oceanside all the way to Lovely Lane, and then it switched over to Soundside until North Buccaneer Drive, then switched back over to Oceanside till the school, and then it switched to Sound on the school campus, just allowed kids access to the school, and then it's back to the Oceanside. We came up with four alternate facility types. The preferred one is 10-to-20-foot offset. It's based on DOT Royal Avenue. A second is a boardwalk for the wetlands and jurisdictional wet streams. The C is a sidewalk with curb and gutter in small, short sections where there are businesses or houses that encroach into the rideaway or close to the rideaway, and you don't have room to actually do the 10-20-foot offset. room to actually do the 10-20-foot offset. And then, finally, where there are some businesses, we're proposing a paved shoulder section similar to 64 coming into Mandio from the coast. Opinion of the cost. Okay. So, our initial concept was based on sidewalks, a five-foot, four-foot sidewalk, so an avion, and an eight-foot wide boardwalk that gives room for passing. Wooden beam retaining walls, rapid flash of beacons at crossings due to the general high speed and volume. And given this community, there are, these crosses are going to be much more spaced out than like Avion, Waves, and the other communities that probably warrants more of a warning. And we were not impacting the traffic, parking and traffic flows of the parking lots. That's where you get to the Wilford Striped Lanes. We were going to replace landscaping as needed and talking to DOT, not DOT, sorry, the Department of Environmental Quality, stormwater control issues should not be a problem for this since it is a linear project. So, stormwater measurements were not considered in cost. The initial, the initial costs were determined by taking the four cross-sections and coming up with a tentative average fee across 100 foot.
Sorry. It's unreadable. Can't read the thing on there. You've got a slide, it's unreadable.
Okay. I was hoping for a bigger screen. I'll kind of go through the points. So, basically, we did, can we zoom in a little bit? No? Okay. So, alternate A, which was the offset pathway, we accounted for silt fence, the concrete sidewalk, and contaminated soil, and came up with average unit cost of 22.6 per linear foot. Alternate B was the wooden boardwalk with the piles and the railings, and that came out to be about 450 a linear foot. Alternate C was the curb and gutter section with concrete, curb and gutter, and soil removal, and that ended up being 52 a linear foot. And C is the pavement markings. We assumed that the cracked asphalt, and normally, a shoulder's 4%, so it'd be too steep for ADA, so that's full asphalt replacement for that six section of asphalt, so that ended up being around 32 a linear foot. And then, we utilized that and applied it to the sections along the corridor. And that came up to a hard construction cost of around 3.3 million, since this is planning level with a 30% contingency, 1.2 million. Then, we threw in some soft costs for design, engineering, construction, observations, with a total cost of roughly 5.7 million, or roughly 750,000 per mile. This is relatively higher than the previous projects. That's mostly due to inflation and construction costs over the past six years, which concrete work has about gone up 60%. And then, roughly, the actual length of boardwalk anticipated for this corridor, based on the wetlands shown from GIS. The wetlands accounted for 25% of the project cost itself. And then, should full funding not be available for the four corridor, we went through potential phasing. We broke it up into three sections. This was presented to the public at the open house. Sorry.
Got it on my phone, now I can read it. The, item B, the boardwalk is approximately 20 times the cost of the option A sidewalk.
That's what we got from, this wasn't available in DOT pricing, but we have people in our company that do boardwalk installations in North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, and they gave roughly an estimate of, it was from 45 to 60 per linear foot. But if you consider that's, the piling is driven into the water, plus the boardwalk itself and the railing.
My, I have 450. Do I have that wrong?
Or wait.
Again, I've got a little slice of this on my phone.
Sorry. It was 45 to 60 per square foot. And then, we have an eight-foot wide sidewalk, plus the half-foot for the railings. So, it's 45 to 60 times the actual width of the sidewalk per linear foot.
So, I'm reading cost per linear foot. I'm just trying to get a comparison, not...
Right. Yeah, it's roughly about 450.
So, $450 per linear foot.
For the eight-foot wide boardwalk.
And the concrete is $22 per linear foot.
Yes.
Or a factor of 20x, 20 times more expensive.
Yes.
Okay, then.
That's what's driven the...
Really good boardwalk. It just stunned me when I saw it. I thought that's what it said.
Yeah. It's what's driven the, like I said, that's what driven the price of this con. There was roughly...
450 a foot?
There's only about 35.
Eight-foot walk?
It's less than, it's just a little over half a mile sidewalk, or boardwalk, and that's driven 25% of the project.
Say again?
There was, there's less, there's about .6 miles of boardwalk through this entire project, and that was...
.6?
And that was roughly 25% of the project cost. So, if you took out the boardwalk and assumed you could just build sidewalk, I think it was roughly 4 million?
3,000 feet would be a million and a half for the boardwalk and about whatever.
Plus the contingency and the engineering that goes into it.
Of course.
Yeah.
Don't want to forget the contingency.
This is planning level.
I got a question. So, the boardwalk looks to me like it's overkill. I mean, I think you could drive a tractor-trailer on this boardwalk. It's so built so well, the one they have on the site here. I'm sure it's built to DOT standards and everything. How, is there a possibility you could do an extended shoulder where the boardwalk you have there to save some cost?
It's likely, given to length of it, the actual impact to the wetlands, the state wouldn't approve that for sidewalk and shoulder installation.
Okay.
But once again, this is planning based on GIS wetlands. So, if you kind of look at it, once an actual survey is done, it could shrink or it could grow. The webs, the GIS website data that we have from Dare County, it shows wetlands going into existing driveways and yards where there's houses. So, I mean, it's aerial and it's old, so it's not as accurate. So, if you do it on a dry year, maybe it's shrunk and you could fill in then.
So, I was thinking, if you have a road, the road rage right there, if you have curb and gutter kind of thing there, and a four-foot sidewalk or a five-foot sidewalk, instead of having an eight-foot path, or maybe you could do, save a little bit of money.
I mean, you could. It's something to look into the design. It's just, giving the general slopes of the road, DOT is likely not going to allow curb and gutter installation for that long, just because of the gutter spread into the roadway itself.
Right.
So, it's just, as things are considered in design, it's just high level based on the wetlands and assuming no impact to the wetlands and the bridges. That's the cost that's coming in.
So, and then, the follow-up question on that, is there a scaled-down version of this very, very heavy-duty walkway that you have here?
Well, this is more just a general kind of boardwalk. So, if you, about a week ago before, I didn't have time to put it in a report, by our planner, she sent me like stip funding for a similar project in...
Where the horses are? Corolla? Corolla?
In Corolla. And it was roughly 1.2 million for, I want to say, about 3,000 feet. And half of that was a boardwalk. So, it seems just boardwalk construction now is a little bit more expensive than it was six years ago. I mean, there's also the, potentially, if it's not DOT-funded, you could maybe get local input and have people kind of help build it and donate their time and resources as well. So, it's just, this is just from kind of a standard DOT pricing inspections and all that. That's kind of the cost that comes to it. Actually, while we're on that point, I'll just kind of go and run through the segments real quick, so you can just kind of see how the boardwalk does drive that. So, segment one, it was .16 miles. It's around 30 a linear foot. Segment two is one mile, it's 52. Segment three is one mile, and it jumps to 142, because there's long sections of boardwalk there. Segment four was about .6 miles, and it's around 47. Segment five is another large section with boardwalk. It's 1.2 miles, and it was roughly 154 a linear foot. And then, six is 1.3, and it's 30. Section seven is .6 miles, 62 a linear foot. Section eight is .2 miles, it's around 71, some more boardwalks and kind of crossings of the streams. So, the two in Buxton, nine was 70, and 10 was 111. But that 111 was also driven by the asphalt replacement along the shoulders. So, that can be evaluated during detailed design, and that might be just simply striping and not full asphalt replacement and repaving to try to get ADA grades. And then, back to potential phasing. We broke it up into phases one to three, which was kind of more the developed section of Frisco, and then segments four to seven, which was from that section of Frisco to the schoolhouse. And phase three was Buxton Village proper, kind of more the developed section. Public responses, the first phase was where people lived is where they wanted the sidewalk. But when you factored that out, the general consensus was, the central portion connecting the two villages and to the school was the priority to build. And that would provide Frisco a connection to the Lighthouse by way of the Buxton Backroad. And that's all I had. I just wanted to thank everyone else again that donated money for this report, and thank all the key partners, Dare County, Outer Banks National Scenic Byway, DOT Division One, DOT Bike Ped, the Albemarle Rural Planning Association, the U.S. National Park Service, and Cape Hatteras Selected Co-op. Did y'all gentlemen have any more questions on the cost or process involved with...
I believe there's a resolution we need to consider. Is that correct? Can't imagine.
This is a resolution accepting the Hatteras Island pathway planning report for Buxton and Frisco. Whereas multi-use paths for bicycle and pedestrian use are reported infrastructure components in communities and serve as alternative transportation routes, offer recreational opportunities for residents and visitors, and to the overall health, wellness, and quality of life of neighborhoods. And whereas the Outer Banks National Scenic Byways Committee, in conjunction with Dare County, have been working over the past decade to make pathways along the entire length of NC 12 with Hatteras Island a reality. And whereas there are portions of the pathway that remain unconstructed in Buxton Village and Frisco Village, and a planning grant from NC Department of Transportation was secured by Dare County with matching funds from Buxton and Frisco communities. The purpose of the study was to identify alignment alternatives and other impacts associated with the construction of these portions of the Hatteras Island pathway. And whereas work on the planning began in 2018 and has been completed, with the results of the study presented in a final report prepared by NC DOT consultants hired to work with Dare County. And whereas the final report identifies alignment alternatives that will serve as the basis for a more detailed engineering plan, which is the next step in the process of constructing the Buxton-Frisco sections of the Hatteras Island pathway. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners accepts the results of the final report with the 7.6 miles of Hatteras Island pathway located in Buxton and Frisco villages, and acknowledges the results of the planning study will serve as a basis from which more detailed engineering reports can be prepared for the construction of the Buxton-Frisco pathway.
Move to adopt the resolution.
As a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to adopt the resolution as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Floor is open for further discussion. Commissioner Count.
The resolution incorporates the fact that we're going to approve the final report.
I don't know what you're asking.
I don't think so.
We're accepting, we're accepting this final report.
Right.
That, that's the wording that we're using, and then it goes to NC DOT, and they will accept it.
For engineering. It's going to serve as a basis.
This is the basis for the engineering, and throughout this, I just want to say this, because we've had such a discussion about the cost. We were dismayed by the cost that were included in the plans. And in the final report, this is just the presentation that you had, there's the final report. We had them include a disclaimer in there that we anticipate that the cost will be lower once we get to a more detailed engineering plan. But, but the action today is to accept the final report on the planning study.
Just wanted clarification. I'm good.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Commissioner Count. Anyone else? Hearing none, then, those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Evans. Appreciate it. Donna? We're going, yes, County man.
Chairman, with your permission, we'll move back up to item number two. Item number two is a public hearing. This is a public hearing with regard to the proposed amendments to section 22-581, the Sand Dune Regulations. Once again, you have five minutes. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to speak to that issue, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. The same rules that we outlined a moment ago for public comment would apply. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to that issue tonight? Seeing no hands, is there anyone from Buxton that would like to speak to that issue?
No comment from Buxton.
That, Mr. Chairman, we close the public hearing. And Donna, is there anything else to offer on this?
No, sir, not unless they have any questions.
Any, anyone have any questions with respect to the proposed amendments to Sand Dune Regulations?
Sure.
I'm good.
Pardon?
I'm good.
Okay.
They did a good job last meeting.
Is there, is there a motion to set a public hearing?
There was.
Oh, that was. I'm sorry. We just had it. My fault. My fault. The pleasure of the board, then.
I move to adopt proposed amendments to section 22-581, doing all three of its standards as recommended by the planning board. These amendments are consistent with the policies of Dare County Land Use Plan, and as detailed in the, in the finding of consistency statement prepared by the planning staff, included as part of this motion to adopt them.
This motion on the floor by Commissioner House, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then, those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Donna.
Chairman, that brings us to item five, and these are proposed zoning amendments with regard to housing alternatives. And Donna, I'll turn the podium back to you.
Donna, welcome. And before you get started, I just want to say, thank you for going the extra mile. I know, at the end of last week, I put some additional request on you to give us some, you know, pictures worth a thousand words.
Yes, sir, it is.
And I thought it would be appropriate if we had some examples, and I, and I appreciate you and staff working so hard to make that happen.
Yes, sir. And I, I have those examples, and I'll show them after I do my PowerPoint presentation. I was not able to include that one survey in the PowerPoint presentation, because it skewed it. And I will say that when the chairman called and said, Donna, can you do some of these illustrations? I said, sure, I can draw something up. And then, when I started drawing it, I thought, no, I can't do that. It would have looked like Bobby's granddaughter had drawn it. So, I prevailed upon a local surveyor to do the one sketch for me, and so, I'm very appreciative of him that, of him doing that for me. So, you have something professional in your packet tonight. But I do have a very detailed staff report in your packet, and it has the, the language of all of the four alternatives. But since it's kind of detailed, I figured that I would do a PowerPoint presentation just to hit the high points of the four alternatives, and I'll go through that, and then I'll entertain any questions that you may have. Last year, we started looking at some zoning amendments to try to facilitate the construction of essential housing, as the chairman is using that phrase. And we adopted a set of amendments in October. I came back to the board in April with some other considerations, and you guys instructed me to go back to the planning board with those alternatives. So, that's what we have done. We spent considerable amount of time working on these. We have four other alternatives for the board's consideration, and I'm going to hit those four alternatives. The first alternative is an expansion of the cluster homes. Last time, we did the first round of amendments, we included developments for what we were calling cluster homes, and we adopted these standards to apply in approximately 25 districts that allow duplexes and multifamily structures. The second round for the cluster homes would expand the availability of those regulations in our more traditional single-family districts. It's 10 additional single-family districts, natural historic, RS1, R1, SkyCo Neighborhood Commercial, Village Residential, Waterfront Residential, the two districts in Mans Harbor, and two districts in East Lake. The cluster home regulations that we adopted last year in October included a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. The revisions in your packet that are associated with these other 10 single-family districts, the planning board felt it was appropriate to increase that minimum lot size to 30,000 square feet in recognition of the single-family districts that we were extending these to. The dwelling limitation of 1,200 square feet is still associated with that cluster home development. The second alternative is the educational housing alternative, and this would be alternatives that we would apply if there was property that was proposed for development in association with Dare County, Coastal Studies Institute, the Board of Education, or the College of the Albemarle. And this is proposed for inclusion in 25 districts, and those are those districts that currently allow duplex structures and multifamily structures. We have an... We have an increased dwelling density associated with this alternative. Most of our multifamily dwelling unit, dwelling per unit densities are in the six to eight range. This is proposed to have 12 units per acre for properties that are served by onsite wastewater. If municipal wastewater is available, that density would go up to 15. The third alternative is what we're calling conditional use subdivisions. And this is, would feature a reduction in the minimum lot size. Currently, the minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet for lots that are served by onsite septic in a central water. This has been the minimum lot size since 1982. The conditional use subdivisions would allow you to have a reduction in the lot size if you agree to a dwelling limitation of 1,200 square feet of conditioned space. That 1,200 square feet is consistent with what's in the, the cluster home developments. In order to qualify and, and be able to use this reduction in lot size, your overall area for subdivision would have to be three acres. So it's not a broad-based reduction in the minimum lot size. It's a reduction in the minimum lot size for what we're calling these conditional use subdivisions. So if you have three acres, you could come in and have a reduction in the lot size to 12,500 square feet. And you would agree to have that with the limitation of 1,200 square feet of conditioned space for your living area. The language that's in the packet, the draft language, it's not allowed to be applied to existing platted subdivisions. So if, if I owned three lots right in a row, I couldn't come back in and combine them and then re-subdivide them to take advantage of this. It's designed to be applied to, to a parcel of land that's not part of a subdivision.
Donna?
Yes, sir.
This one, if I'm reading it correctly, for five units, we would be about 62,000, 63,000 square feet, 12.5 per lot.
Right.
That would not include additional square footage for paved road or common area.
Right.
Or any easements.
Right.
So I'm rolling it up in my head to 75,000 square feet or so?
It, it, it's hard to say. You may be able to have a three-acre parcel that already has frontage on a road and go in and do something where you would not have to have a, a new road installed, and so that might come into play.
Ah, you're right. That's true.
Right.
I was just doing a comparison with the cluster homes because a 30,000 square foot section of land there had contained the five units.
Right.
And these five units would be at least twice that square footage of required land.
Right. And in this, the cluster lot subdivision, you would, the, the land would transfer in its entirety and be owned and fee simple, whereas with the cluster homes, only the footprint of the house is what transferred, and everything else is hold, is held in common ownership. So there's a, there's a, there's a difference in the way that the land is held and, and the development occurs. I, I'm working on, I'm having the GIS department prepare some maps so that if we get to the public hearing stage, that you guys will have a better opportunity of how these apply in the zoning districts across unincorporated Dare County. I had talked to him, and he had them working on them, and when he, the ones that he had developed, they were not quite showing what I wanted them to show. And so we're back to the drawing board on that. But I hope to have those maps for you the next time we discuss this, so you can see how, how this lays out. And the fourth alternative is what we're calling workforce housing. And this is kind of a play on the residential accessory dwelling unit alternative that we adopted in October of last, last year, except instead of a residential house and accessory dwelling unit, you would have a commercial structure and a housing unit in the back that would be dedicated to employees. You could have one workforce housing unit, or if you had enough area, you may be able to have more than, than one workforce housing unit on your property. We would be relying on the 60% lot coverage, which is the commercial lot coverage. These regulations would be amended into the, the various commercial zoning districts that we have. It's 17 commercial zoning districts. If you just had a commercial structure and you were putting one workforce housing unit in the back or on the property, then it would be subject to administrative approval, which is consistent with the accessory dwelling unit standards that we adopted. If you had two or more, then it would trigger conditional use permit review by the Board of Commissioners. In the planning board's discussion, we talked about the year-round occupancy and how you would ensure that these were being used for employees. And we acknowledge that that's something that we would struggle with, but that we would, to allow the business owner to possibly recoup some of his investment, that they could use them for something other than employee housing, if they wanted to rent them out in the wintertime to someone that wasn't an employee, that they could do that. So that's where that language is coming in there, that it shall not be used for short-term occupancy from April the 1st to October the 31st. And again, that was a large part of the planning board's conversations about how we, how we applied that and.
What was short-term in your mind? One week, two weeks?
We, we adopted a definition of short-term occupancy back in October, and it's 30 days or less.
30 days.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And so those are the four alternatives. The next step that, if it's the board's consensus of the board to move forward, we would go to public hearing. I do have those illustrations if the guys could put those up for me, and I'll just go through those since the chairman asked for those. He's got to switch that, so you do just bear with us for a second. So, there we go. This is the illustration of a typical cluster home development, and this is on a 30,000 square foot lot. You'll see that they have a 30-foot right-of-way going in there, and there's five homes and the associated septic areas with that and the associated parking. And so that, that's just a, what you could expect something like that to function. And so 30,000 square feet, five homes. The other illustrations are some sketches that I was talking with a business owner down on Hatteras, where the whole idea for the workforce housing came from. And he has a commercial business, and it's located to the front portion of his lot, if you will. And he has all this excess land in the back, and he was, had sketched these out and just had emailed them to me during the course of the conversation. And so you can see that, you know, the opportunity to maybe put one house there or he, or three other individual units, however the area is. And so that may be something that gets some traction there, the workforce housing. I'm not really sure. Certainly for that individual, it looks like a very viable opportunity for him. And I had emailed him that we were, we were going to be discussing these tonight, and so he has been following the progress of that. And so if he would, yeah, if you would advance the slide there so they can see the workforce housing units there to page, there we go. Nope, that's the same one. There we go. That's the one unit, and then the next one has the three in the back.
There.
Right.
That's the unit down in the lower right-hand corner.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. And again, that's just him sketching it out of what he had in mind. What he had communicated to me is that he, he has a house now that he houses his employees in, but the other houses that his employees were living in were being rented out to Airbnb, and so that was taking them out of the, the market. And so he, you know, he's, he's, was, he's forced to consider some alternatives, and this is what he is hoping to be able to do. He's taking care of his own situation there to the best of his ability, but he admits that he's struggling with it. He said he had seven employees that had lost housing because of the short-term rentals.
How many folks did he contemplate putting in the two-bedroom, two-bath house there?
I don't know. I didn't ask him that. That was just his eye, that was just something that he was sketching, yeah. So I'm going to stop right there and entertain any questions that you guys may have on the specifics of those four alternatives. As I said, the next step in this, if we want to move forward with the adoption of these is we have to have a public hearing on these. And typically, we have public hearings on land use issues at the second meeting in the month, and so that would be September the 16th.
Any questions, Donna?
Very well presented.
Yeah, it's, I understand it.
Anyone else?
No, thank you for that. The, the deck was very helpful, Donna. Taking some of the detail and turning it into this was very, very helpful.
And I would move for a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner House. Commissioner House has made a motion to set a public hearing for September the 16th as suggested, and is there a second?
Also second.
A second by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
John, a quick question. Did you, during the planning board session, did you have any input from members on how we can limit? You had, unless you had there about short-term housing, the definition of how we can limit that?
Well, we spent a lot of time talking about having a demonstration that they were really your employees, you know, that you needed to demonstrate that you had someone that was employed for a minimum of 20 hours a week for, or 120, that someone in the house had to be an employee. And I was pretty adamant that I felt that that was an unenforceable set of language in that, that I was uncomfortable adopting something that was unrealistic for us to enforce. When I first drafted the language up, we, I had tied it so that, that workforce housing unit had to be used for the employees of that business. And as the conversation went, we thought, well, you know, why limit it to just that business? If he, if he has room in the back of his property or on his property to build a house, and it's helping someone and getting a unit out there for someone that's a, that's a working individual to live in, then, then we're accomplishing our goal. And so, you know, even if it's just one house or two houses, it's still increasing the demand, and that's what we're, that's what we're hoping to do. Every little bit helps. But we decided that it was just, let's rely on that short-term occupancy and try to go with that. It's, 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 it's a, the enforcement aspect is something that I was struggling with.
And short terms defined as weekly?
Less than 30 days. Yes, sir.
Yeah. So there's a motion on the floor, then. Any further discussion? Set a public hearing, September 16th. Hearing none, those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Hang tight, Donna. I would like, before we go to item seven, I'd like to have some discussion with the board, and I have a suggestion to make of the board and would love to get feedback from the board and, and approval. This board has tackled numerous hot issues in, in recent years, and I commend my fellow commissioners for going the extra mile and, and trying to successfully address very important issues before our county. I can think of no other topic right now any more critical than essential housing throughout Dare County, be it for our teachers, be it for our law enforcement, for our fire, be it for our seasonal workers. I have, as you very well know, we have a contract with the chamber, and I, myself, along with Commissioner House, and our public information officer today, met with Karen Brown and Mr. Peel to talk about a potential in Bowser Town, as most of you are aware, we've been talking about for a number, number of weeks. And Bissell provided a potential plat, plan of something that could potentially be done with respects to essential housing, one, two, a three-bedroom. This is the, this is very similar to what we've received, that Commissioner Ross has been working with Saiga on. They're, they're going to make some additional presentation to him in the coming weeks as to what could potentially be done out there. And Commissioner Ross has been working hard with them to, to work on those issues, along with another report that we had done a number of years ago, very, very similar. I have certainly spoken with the mayor of Manio, and they're on board to help us do whatever we could potentially do out there with respects to septic. So we, we need to address this in unincorporated Dare. There are some other potential opportunities out there that we could address, and I would like to request the, the board participate in a workshop. We set a workshop, and I'm, if you look at your calendars tonight, I'm, I'm flexible for evening and flexible during the day, but we need to bring all, all the materials and everything and the different subjects that we've talked about to a workshop, and, and let's see if we can come to some consensus amongst ourselves as to what's the top priority, how we can potentially resolve some of this moving forward and, and get a, and, and get a plan in place. And I, and I would encourage you to see if we can't set a workshop, and we'll ask our planning director to be there. We can certainly have the chamber come in and speak. And, and opening remarks, we can certainly have public comment, come, public come in and comment as to what certainly their, their concerns are and what they'd like to see. So if it's the pleasure of the board, I would, I would like to set a date and a time this evening, if, if possible, if you could look at your calendar. I don't have, I don't have a specific date in mind, so I'm, I'm flexible for you guys if you have your calendars available. Certainly, I would like to see it perhaps done within the next few weeks. I do know that we've certainly got a holiday coming up, but we could shoot for the, certainly the end of, of the week, second, the, the first week in September, Thursday or Friday. Of course, I don't know if anybody's on vacation at that time. That'd be the 5th and 6th of September, or even, even the following week. The, when's our board meeting? The?
9th.
9th? Is our board meeting the 9th?
2nd and 16th.
The 16th.
The 3rd and the 16th.
That's right. The 3rd and the 16th. That's right, because Monday's a holiday, so.
That's right.
Certainly the 9th, the 10th available. I just, I'm open for any suggestion by any board member.
Not 9th, because the Waterways meeting is 7:00 in the.
In the evening?
Yeah. But I'm, I'm pretty clear. I mean, that's, that's good timing, that's, this week in September.
The 9th, the week of the 9th?
Labor Day's over with.
Are y'all comfortable meeting in the morning, say 9 o'clock?
Yep.
On the 9th?
On the 9th?
Yep. Or the 4th or the 5th. Bobby's going to have an issue with that.
The 10th or the 11th are better for me.
10th is a task force meeting.
Pardon?
The 10th is a task force meeting.
What time's your task force?
9.
9:30.
Y'all usually go to noon, don't you?
Yeah, about that. 9:30 to 11:00 or so.
How about the 11th? Is that?
I can't do the 11th or 12th.
We could move it then to the following week.
We could, we could actually have it, we have a, a board meeting at 5:00 on the 16th. We could, we could do it at 1:00. That way, we're not taking up another draft.
That'd work.
Would that work for you guys?
Sure.
Well, let's shoot for the 16th of September at 1:00.
I'll try to make it.
Can we call it Housing Workshop? That work for you?
Essential, yeah.
Yeah. Essential Housing Workshop.
Donna, would you agree with that? Going on essential workplace and?
Don't be tight.
Yep.
So, so.
Essential works for me, yes. Yeah.
So everybody, that, that date works for y'all at 1:00?
16th, 1:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate y'all's cooperation in that. I think this is very important for us to try to tackle and, and try to get everything on the table so that we're all on the same page and, and, and form, formulate a plan to move forward. Does that work for you, Donna?
Yes, sir.
All right. So I don't think we need a motion to do that, do we?
That's right. We'll keep the notices out.
Okay. Thank you again. I'll turn the agenda. I'll turn the agenda back over to you.
I know I've got to go out.
That brings us to item six on the agenda, and Dave Clawson will have a presentation for us.
Good evening. My only role is going to be to introduce. We're going to cover a little bit of the capital investment fund, which you've heard about during budget adoption and capital improvements plan adoption. Talk about debt and metrics, and how that relates a little bit to ratings, and then finally, how all that relates, and all of this relates to a fund balance policy for the general fund. And I say "we" is going to be the county's financial advisory firm, which is DEC and Associates, and has been since the inception of the firm. Andrew Carter's here, who you met at the board retreat. And then the principal firm, Doug Carter's here. Doug's actually, I was just thinking, Doug and I first worked on debt for the detention center, which is a couple of months shy of being 27 years old. So he's been working for Dare, with Dare County that long. So I'm going to turn it over to Doug.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Doug, Andrew, thank you all for being here this evening.
Sure, thank you. Andrew's going to handle the technology.
Yes, sir.
And that is?
Put it up here, name.
Oh, he is. Mr. Chairman, gentlemen of the county commission, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight. We're here to continue the discussion of the capital investment fund of the county, and how you're managing that. And I will just make one side note, Mr. Chairman, to what you said earlier. This is somewhat in jest, so don't throw anything at me. As residents of the great state of Charlotte Mecklenburg, Andrew and I would much prefer to be spending our visitor dollars in Dare County. Thank you.
Oh, right.
See if you can work on some of those people over there with that. They're all in hurdle.
So we're happy here to be spending our dollars here. It's a great time here, and thank you very much. So, Andrew, with that.
You, you guys will add in the next couple of days a little bit to our 1.19.
A little bit, yes, sir.
They're going to bring up to 1.2.
Yeah, hopefully. There it is. And it's that? Okay, let's go to the second page. Okay, cool. All right, we're going to try to get this done in 15 minutes or so, or less. So let me say this to you. I'm going to do the first part, then I'm going to turn it over for, to Andrew for the numbers, and then we'll talk a little bit later about ratings. So we want to update you since March the 6th. We want to talk about what the real results of creating the CIF have been. You'll see some numbers on its initial performance and the capacities it will give you into the future. We want to talk a bit about rating agency metrics. You are a rated public entity. You're going to have more debt to issue under this capital plan, and so we want to talk to you a bit about that, and we want to give you some peer community or county comparatives. And then we'll discuss a bit about the fund balance policy as a way to get you started on a discussion or a thought process of how perhaps that ought to change with the CIF coming on board, and, and to talk about it a little bit from a rating metrics perspective as well. The last time our firm was here, my business partner, Andrew and Jeremy, were here. We basically spent a great deal of time about talking about the importance of financial planning, and how important that has been to Dare County. You've been a very good planner. You've done a lot of really good things over the years. You've provided a roadmap. You've done measurements. You've done the essential things that you see from what we at least think are the five or six steps to really good financial planning. You have also been a leader in written countywide financial policies. And I would say to you what I said to a committee meeting that occurred before this meeting. I see your policies, as a person that's been in this business a long time, I see your policies as the benchmark for what good policies would be for a government, covering many things, not simply fund balances, but also policies on procurement, revenues, budgets, fund balances, keeping records on your assets, and all of those things. One of the things that planning is important for is not the short term, but is more important for the long term. And I've already heard one subject discussed here tonight, which is housing, which is a long-term planning item for every government we know and work with, regardless of where you are. And so, long-term planning for those issues, as well as the other issues that you do as county commissioners, are very important. And to sort of move this along a little bit, I want to say with particular reference to beach nourishment, you all, based upon the clients we work with on the coast, have just done a superior job in defining beach nourishment is not also, is not just a way to keep your beaches in their proper condition, and to do them in an engineered fashion so that you can collect money appropriately when storms come, but in a larger perspective to keep the engine of your economic development running at the proper pace. And so, we would really applaud you particularly for your beach nourishment planning, along with all the other things. I would say one final thing to you. The Local Government Commission, which is an entity that, in case other people in the body don't know what it is, it's a unique agency in the United States that approves all of the debt you issue, all of the long-term financing contracts you issue, basically anything related to how you can endet your citizens. And it's unique, and occurred because Asheville went bankrupt, and after that, everybody decided that we needed state regulatory, and they've done a really good job in doing that. They certainly see planning as a very high-quality thing, and I will say to you, you are the only public body in the state that have done beach nourishment financings in the fashion you've done them, and the ones that have been a partner in the fashion as to how your towns have done them. So I think that is a really good illustration of how your long-term planning and implementing that plan with appropriate borrowings have been widely accepted by a unique regulator in the 50 states, the North Carolina Local Government Commission. We came here on March the 9th, started this discussion, and basically said in a short way to properly plan for capital acquisition, to bill facilities for your county. It's really appropriate to separate operating money, which you primarily know of as your general fund, from your capital money. You appropriately separated your beach nourishment money from your general fund money, and to look at your long-term capital needs, the most reliable, most easy method to share data and metrics with you is to separate them. That presentation was given, and to your credit, in that meeting, you voted to move forward. And so, by doing so, you were able to implement the CIF as part of your budgetary process in this year, rather than waiting for another year. And we promised to come back to you after all of those events took place, and show you what the CIF currently looks like, what the numbers look like, and Andrew will handle that for the time being. And then I will end and talk to you a bit about ratings and how you compare.
So I have the great pleasure to talk about all the numbers and the most exciting part of all this. How does a CIF get put together? Mostly, you start, I'm going to do the right slide. Oh, can we go back? So what's included in the CIF? The capital investment fund, as we are calling it. So first, you move all the current debt service and pay-go spending that you have, currently spending in your budget. Then we move the other revenues that you have identified, sales tax, lottery, transfer taxes. Those are all revenues inside the CIF model. And then we start layering in the new debt or pay-go spending, and we have layered in the 2020 adopted CIP spending schedule in the particular model. Then next, as we move forward, we project revenues. We have to project expenditures, of course. And then, once those happen, usually, projects don't move quite as fast as we think they are. Engineers love to spend money, but they usually can't spend it as fast as they'd like. So sometimes, projects move slowly. That adds capacity to the model. There's also actual debt costs are lower than we assumed in the model. Of course, we use some conservative interest rates so that we capture the rates you're going to have. They always come in lower than what we have projected, or we, we hope they do. Rapid debt reduction, y'all are getting ready to have some payoffs of your existing debt, that will really bring into the model. And then some other factors that create additional capacity with the dollars that you dedicate within the CIF model. So, let me move the spreadsheet. So this is a snapshot of what the summary page of the model looks like, and it's somewhat complicated. I'll try to zoom in on, on a couple of things here. We start, of course, with the revenues. So we have a column for your annual resources. These are the general fund resources, land transfer tax, sales taxes, those, they all get combined. A lot of these columns have pages behind them that are much more detail-oriented that you can look at. But we pull it all up to the front. So these are all the dedicated annual resources into the CIF model. It's approximately, right now, around $20 million.
And can I say, Andrew, Commissioner Ross has tested all of those layered sheets below and determined that they factor up, correct?
That is correct.
So far, so good, right? So then we move to the expenditure side. We have your currently issued debt service. That is what you have already issued and are paying annually on debt that has already been issued. And then we have a couple of new columns for debt that may be coming on. These are planned issuances. They have not happened yet, but they are the currently planned issuances for the county. We have some various projects, EMS facilities, public works, those are some of the projects that are on here. We also look at other future debt and pay-go vehicles, major equipment that you might buy. There's a whole column just for the helicopter and the Dare mid-flight system. And then we have a column for all the pay-go projects that happen in the county. School pay-go, school capital outlay, the county's capital outlay, and other pay-go projects.
Does everyone in the audience know what pay-go means?
Pay as you go. Those are.
That's good.
As I say, it's the pay-as-you-go.
I just wanted to be sure.
The cash you spend annually to spend on cash projects.
Virginia's famous for that.
So then we get finally to our total expenses. So you have total revenues, total expenses. We hope that the revenues are greater than the expenditures, and we start building what's called a capital investment fund, fund balance. So this is its own separate fund balance that it's created. So in the years where there aren't as much expenditures as you have revenues, though it gets left off into a fund balance that you may have to use in the future, as you see in some red numbers in that capital fund used column, those are the years where revenues are not as high as expenditures, and you might need to use some cash out of your fund balance. Ultimately, that's how this model works. You have the revenues, the expenditures coming in. You see, we spend a lot of time projecting far out into the future. We do that to give us room, but as we all know, projections are only as good as the first couple of years. We tick and tie the model every year to the actual revenues and actual expenditures that are done in the CAFR, so that we have a new-year basis of which to project forward from there. So right now, the model, I believe, is very healthy and is operating as, as appropriate. Again, this will lead us into talking about the ratings.
Let me do one thing on the model, if I may. I'm the big-picture guy around here. Let me tell you the important thing. Back to the model, please. To determine how much capacity you have, if you look at the model that we prepared so far, what it basically says to you is, if we issue the debt that's anticipated and the issuance is listed on the sheet for the various purposes, essentially, for the next five or so years, you will have used your capacity, because we will have been issuing that debt, we will have been paying the new debt service, we will be accumulating a fund balance so that you have an adequate or reasonable minimum fund balance. It's after the fifth year where you begin, if you look at the column that says fund balance, and you have a model, a printed model for you, that goes through the year 2030, as you see the debt serv, as you see the CIF fund balance begin to increase, you will know automatically that you have, begin to have additional capacity, either to do other. So if you look to the far right on the fund balance, as the fund balance begins to increase, that is when you begin to have additional capacity. The, the beauty of the CIF model and how it integrates with your capital improvement plan and with your budget scenario, you will see this again every year in its entirety. It will be balanced to the new CIP. You will know for what time period you have essentially consumed your capacity, and where you will have new capacity, and will be able to address those areas where you might want to add other, either pay-as-you-go in cash, or debt-oriented projects. The other beauty, I think it gives you, because we discussed earlier, the economic engine that's called your beaches, as well as the other economic engines inside the county, it also gives you a place, if you need to go beyond where your current beach fund is, and you need to find additional resources, then you can look to this fund as another place where you might need to look at those kinds of investments, as well as housing and others. Okay? So where you are thus far, just in general, nice plan, you can do the issues that are anticipated in your CIP, you begin to build capacity after the fifth year or so, and then into the future, we'll continue to discuss those as time go along. Good? All right, let's talk a little bit about ratings, so that we don't, don't go too far over. That's back to the presentation. There it is, okay? You see how good I am at the clicker? Oh, look at this. Okay, really quickly. You are currently rated by Moody's, and we use Moody's as the example because that's the name everybody knows. They've been around the longest. It's the gold standard. Moody's ranks four things about you and everybody else. It's a consistent ranking system. They rate you on the economy, on your finances, on your management, and on your outstanding debt and pension liabilities. You, because you're located on a big old body of water, have certain locational issues that are often looked at, regardless of where you sit on a big old body of water, but they are issues that get looked at consistently. And of course, we, since we've been working with Dave and the county over time, have dealt with locational issues, extraordinarily, extraordinary costs that can come from that locational issue, and so forth. And then, we've also looked at, what are the methods so that you can fund things in general, to help you get around some of those locational issues? Beach nourishment was impeccable. A great way to say, protection for health and safety, protection for our economy. So those are examples of how we do it. And then finally, on ratings, it's very important that there is buy-in, both from management and elected officials, on how all this work. Now, pretty rapidly, I'm going to show you how you split those areas. I'm going to do it rapidly, and then I'm going to show you compared to two other beach counties, okay? So basically, economy is tax-based, and your size, you're well over $12 billion. They want you to be a sizable entity in terms of your tax values. They look at full value per capita. You're well over $150,000. I will tell you as an example, $150,000 is a very high number for the state of North Carolina on an average. Most counties are well below $100,000 per capita. They also look at their wealth measurement, which is the median family income. Where are you on that? They look on the finances, totally towards fund balance and cash balances, and how they change over time, as you can see. And they're in three columns, so that you will see their weight, and then what is that number based upon your rating? You're currently is rated, as I said earlier, AA2, so in the middle of the AA category. They look at an institutional framework under management. How much capacity do you have to manage yourself without other controls surrounding that? They look at your operating. They look at your operating history, how well have you had revenues that are equal to or more than expenditures? That's an important factor to them. And then, finally, they look at debt, certain categories of debt, your debt as a percentage of your assessed value, your debt to revenues, and then, they look at pension issues. And I will say this, because it's for all rating agencies, even though we have very well-funded pension systems in North Carolina, of which your employees are part primarily, they use pretty conservative standards, but you're obviously pretty highly rated on that. Okay, let me just do three comparisons to you, really quickly, we compared you to Brunswick and to New Hanover. As you can see, New Hanover has a triple-A credit rating, Brunswick has a double-A one, and you have a double-A two. I'm gonna highlight for a minute, and then, I'm gonna sort of give you the Doug Carter bottom line. All of you, all of these counties are triple-As for full value, all but one is a triple-A on per capita. As you can well see, per capita assessed value, you are head and shoulders above the rest, thankfully. You will see the populations per Moody's and how the calculations were made. Your median family income is not quite, it's ninety-two point five percent, you compare fairly well here. Obviously, New Hanover's a bit above, I think primarily because of employment, kinds of issues, businesses, that kind of thing. And then, you see your fund balances are all approximately in the thirty-five to thirty-six percent range. I'm gonna say this quickly for you, y'all have policies, as an elected body, related to what we all know as the unassigned fund balance, what we all know as the available or available-for-use fund balance. Moody's tends to use a little bit more, they add parts of your fund balance back to get to their number, but as a consistency, you can see that all three of you are roughly the same. Your net direct debt is fairly similar, I will compare you to Brunswick in this case, and although I love Brunswick County, and it's a beautiful county, they don't contribute as much to their localities for beach nourishment. So, the difference between net direct debt as a percentage of fund balance, as a percentage of assessed value, pardon me, I think is almost, a lot of it has to do with beach nourishment borrowings that you've done to be in partnership with your town partners. And then, finally, the net debt to operating revenues, they're fairly simple. The point to all of this is, I think that the county has operated well compared to higher-rated peers, in some respects, I think you ought to move up the line. We'll be working towards that, moving up the line hopefully will help you attain on interest rates. They're so low now, it's hard. If they ever rise, the differences in rating saves you more because of the larger interest rate. Here's all hoping they won't ever go up.
Some of this does come to the locality, they, with the golf courses and stuff, they've got down in Brunswick, they just got more land than we do. If we could find out a way to, you know, put stuff on water, it would skyrocket.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right, that's exactly right. But I will go back to one final thing.
You're gonna work on that, Commissioner Cox?
Your full value per capita.
I'll get to it.
Yeah, their full value per capita is really extraordinary, I think that's a, as a comparative, until we calculated these numbers, I would have never guessed how much higher you were than your two comparators. So, to that, I see positive things from a rating perspective, and we're gonna be looking towards that as we move towards other bond issuances. And then, finally, David introduced this to you, with the new CIF, we'll need to look at a policy for maintenance of minimum fund balance inside the CIF. That would add together with the fund balance that's calculated out of the general fund, and then, that would be looked at by Moody's and other rating folks, other people who look at you and feel that you're a good credit. I will say one thing to you, as, and as we move further towards it, Dave, I think there'll be other times to discuss this, but I think the important issue is, is if we, as we look at the two of those together, it would be our hope that you would want to look at that so that you would be in the highest rating category for fund balances. Guys, locational issues are not just what can happen to you, but how much money you need available to you. And so, I think that should be considered as part of it. And then, we would bring back to you a minimum level of fund balance we think you need to maintain inside the CIF, as a way to keep it fiscally sound. Right now, I will say to you, we're looking at a range between one-fourth and one-half of the debt service that you owe for the next year, so that you can always have a reserve in that way. So, bottom line is, as we look at the putting of these two together, I think we would encourage you to look at raising that towards the highest level, as we've seen on the previous slides. Dave, did we cover in that what you wanted to say?
Okay.
And is that thirty percent you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
You?
Yeah, I agree, yeah. Yes, sir. And we'll be back, I don't know if it's a group, we'll do it singularly, David, but there'll be more discussion about this as time goes on.
Doug?
How much over fifteen minutes did we go?
Oh, you're good. Andrew, thank you all so much. Y'all have any questions, Doug or Andrew?
Well, just some of the mechanics of this, this would be overseen, this would be part of Capital Improvement Committee.
We actually spent considerable time before this meeting, as Doug referenced, we did a little bit of drilling and deep diving, so, yeah, we explored it quite extensively.
At some point, we're gonna, I would encourage us to address where we're gonna go with the airport about bringing in commerce, is this something that would fit under?
That's also, that was actually part of a projected capital plan, Danny, yep.
Let me see, what else can I come up here with that maybe stump ya?
No, seriously, those are very good questions, very valid, and we actually fortunately had the meeting just before this, and they occurred to those of us on the capital committee, just as they did appropriately to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you all again, Doug, Andrew, appreciate it so much.
We're gonna go spend a little bit of money now.
There you go. Enjoy.
We don't have a limit on that.
That brings us to item seven on the agenda. In the last two meetings, I've talked to you all a little bit about our dredge spoil issues, and we've had some conversation about it. Tonight, I've asked Ken Wilson to come and talk to us some more, give us some more detail, talk to us about sort of the scope of what our problem is, and also, talk to us a little bit about timing, because we were having some back and forth at the last meeting about when we think we ought to be doing this. And so, Ken's got a presentation for you, and then, more importantly, he'll be here to answer questions you have, if you have any on that issue. So, Ken, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, great. Well, thanks for having me up here, and I will come up here anytime, as long as you all promise that I can come talk about dredge issues, right after you have the Carters talk about debt service and spreadsheets. I'll be happy to come up anytime.
I could see the dollar signs rolling around your house.
That's why fifteen minutes is critical.
Oh, my goodness, oh, my goodness.
We're rated very low.
That's right. Well, I spoke to Bobby shortly after your last meeting, and he filled me in on some of the discussions that you all had. And in the spirit of a picture's worth a thousand words, I was just gonna come up here and answer any questions that you might have, but I put just a brief PowerPoint presentation together. It's got two slides with some bullets on it that basically just show you how we're looking at this proposal, as really two parts, a needs assessment to understand what inventory of dredge disposal sites you already have in place, how much dredging do we anticipate occurring over a given period of time, and what type of capacity we might need in the future. And then, that's kind of phase one, and then, phase two, that's also part of the proposal that you all have in front of you, is a concept alternative development that I want to talk a little bit about. So, going through, this is what I was just saying, the needs assessment, basically, we'll build this in a GIS framework, we'll identify dredge needs throughout the county, we'll look at coordinating acquisition of Corps of Engineers data. So, the Corps of Engineers, right now, they have a lot of, a lot of their federal channels have geotechnical information on those channels, they've got a lot of dredge records. One of the first steps on day one would be to submit these FOIA requests, so that we can get all of that data in-house, and start looking at what the Corps has, to basically look at the amount of dredging that they've done, but also, the sediment quality, that's gonna be a big factor on how that material is used. Can it be used in construction? Can it be used in putting that sand on the beach? Does it have, you know, contaminants in it that will have to be dealt with in special ways? Those are all things that we need to know in that, in that plan. So, once we get through that, well, let me, let me just back up for just a second. I wanted to stress in these two slides, in this slide, we've got kind of a Google Earth overview of Dare County, that yellow, that bright yellow line is basically the western boundary, obviously, the northern boundary along the coast is the northern side of Duck, and the southern boundary is Hatteras, Hatteras Inlet. But what I wanted to stress here is, is on this map in Google Earth, basically, those red channels are all federal channels that are in place. The federal channels, and assessing the needs of these federal channels will certainly be part of this study, but we also want to look at other navigation needs throughout the county. So, we see this as comprehensive. Just kind of going through the other day, looking at some of these, I mean, you know, things like the canals behind southern shores, or Collington Harbor, or over at Mann's Harbor, you know, some of these internal channels, even homeowners' associations, community access points, things down in Buxton on the backside, we want to look at all of these dredging needs, even if the county isn't the primary, you know, responsible agent for keeping those open. We want to understand, you know, who might be putting material in these sites, and trying to cite, you know, county-wide, trying to cite as many of these locations, so that they have as much beneficial use as possible.
Ken, on that map, we're talking about the red channels to the right of the yellow line, we're not talking about that, which would be the intercoastal waterway to the left.
That's correct. So, anything, any of those red channels inside of Dare County, as well as any of these private channels inside of Dare County. That map there was just a screen grab of the Google Earth image that I have up, all those red channels are Corps of Engineers channels, I could zoom out, and it would show all of the channels throughout the state, that's why the intercoastal waterway is on there. All right, so, the second part of this would be this concept alternative development and feasibility analysis. So, once we've got all of that information, really, what we'd like to do coming out of this proposal would be a number of different recommendations on specific site locations that we would recommend to develop these dredge disposal sites. And that would play into the type of equipment that would need to be used to dredge different areas in the surrounding area, like some of them, some of the disposal sites may be used to hydraulically pipe, pipeline dredge material directly into those sites. They may also have some use for bucket and barges in those areas to dredge out private slips or community access points. So, we want to be able to accommodate as many of these different types of equipment as possible when we cite these. The other thing that we want to have a big stress on, aside from using it for dredge disposal, is what other sorts of benefits to the county can we identify through this study? So, some of the things that we've come up with are, you know, coastal resilience, is it possible that through this process, maybe we identify some wetland areas where you're actually going to, one of your, one of your options for disposal is something that they call thin layer placement, they're doing some of that down in Georgia, they do some up in New Jersey, but basically, it's basically spreading, you know, fine material that'll run, or either you could spray it on top of marshlands, to actually add sediment to this, to help it keep up with sea level rise. Some of the, some of the options that we might come up with would be, when it's not being used as a dredge disposal site, can it be used for recreational activities? Could we put a small dock off of the backside of this thing, and could it be used for recreational fishing, or camping, or something like that? Could living shorelines be put in around it to, you know, to create a place that's gonna keep that site from eroding over time, but also, add some environmental benefits to the site as well? One of the things that we've talked to, Michael Flynn from Coastal Federations here as well tonight, he and I have been talking a little bit about this, this project, because when we get into some of the things like thin layer placement that I just talked about, or even being able to cite these locations in areas where they're not just an island out in the middle of the sound somewhere, where we only can access by boat, the ideal situation would be places where, you know, vehicular traffic can access these sites, so that it can easily be hauled out for, you know, potentially selling it for construction, potentially selling it to DOT in times where there's breaches in the island down on Hatteras Island, that we've got some, some resources to tap into, we don't have to truck that in from out of county.
Or for an airstrip.
Or for an airstrip. But the idea being, a lot of these locations, when you're in, you know, a land-limited place, like you had mentioned earlier, it's not Brunswick County where you've got all this land, you've got a lot of water, there may be some sites that are ideal, where you're gonna encroach into some wetlands, or maybe encroach into some submerged aquatic vegetation. But if we can work, you know, with other, with other entities like Coastal Federation, or, you know, working closely, taking our time to plan these accordingly, we may be able to do some of these things, that may have some short-term impacts on things like wetlands or SAVs, but have some long-term real benefits to the environment and to the general public. So, I think, too many times, when we get into these navigation issues, as you all know, we're working on the Manio Shallow Bag Project, you know, we get into that, and everybody wants that project to move, you know, lickety-split, and get it done, and get it out of there, but when we get into it, we're very limited on what sort of dredge disposal sites we have to deal with. And it takes some, some time and some effort to sort all that out, before we can get into the permitting, and ultimately, the construction. I'm not gonna tell you that, you know, that there's a crisis that's ringing, that this thing needs to be solved tonight, but by starting a plan like this, and taking your time, and looking in citing these locations in the appropriate place, it gives us time to work with the agencies to do it in an environmentally conscious way, to go through the process of permitting these things that might have, you know, long-term coastal resilience benefits, like this thin layer placement type thing. So, so those are, you know, those are some of the factors that I kind of wanted to stress. I did add in a couple of pictures, I told you, I showed you a few pictures. These are some examples that I pulled from the Corps of Engineers website. The upper two and the bottom-left are sites, are all of the same site, this is a thin layer placement project that they're doing down in the coast of Georgia. They have very fine-grained material in the intercoastal waterway in Georgia, and they don't have a whole lot of places to put it, and they've gotten to a point where they were desperate enough to try something like this. And so far, it's working out pretty well. They're also looking at some options of dumping some material in some, you know, some deep scour holes that aren't in the ocean, they're actually on the backside adjacent to, or as part of the intercoastal waterway. But they're looking at some out-of-the-box disposal options, and I think when you, I'm sorry?
Ken, I'm sorry, is it realistic expected the Army Corps will be amenable to doing some stuff like that? I mean, that's all on their dime.
Sure, so, that's right. So, so it depends on who the, you know, who's actually doing that construction cost, but if it's, if it's, if it's in a way that's least cost, I mean, that's one of the reasons why they're looking at this, because the other options are filling up scows and towing those scows way out, you know, offshore, to where they could dump that material. So, it comes down to a, to an option of, you know, what's, you know, what's the least cost, when you're dealing with the Corps of Engineers. If this was being done with, you know, state money, or local money, or something like that, then, you know, if there are some added benefits that you feel are worth it, you've got these options as well. I think that project, I don't know if they were necessarily rainbowing it in, like that bottom right-hand slide, that's another application where they're kind of spraying it on top of the marsh. I think this material was so fine and fluidized, that they were able to kind of flow it over that marsh and get it to settle in. Living shorelines, you all are pretty familiar with those, but again, that would be a real option of protecting the outskirts of these dredge disposal sites, thinking down along maybe the backside of, you know, anywhere on Hatteras Island, you could see this type of, this type of project could come in handy. Stockpiling material for repair projects, like I said, could be another use. This is something that's come up a little bit, shoreline stabilization, this is that Fort Raleigh Elizabethan Gardens shoreline, we've been talking to the National Park Service quite a bit on this Manio project, they have some interest in placing some material up there, potentially putting in some, some sills and backfilling that to create sort of a living shoreline environment. So, there may be opportunities in the county right now, where, you know, you've got some estuarine shorelines that are suffering from erosion, that if properly cited, these, these facilities may add additional benefit. And then, last slide is recreational access, this is a pier off of Mann's Harbor, I believe, up off of the Northern Bridge.
Ken, maybe you could touch on the nineteen, I think it's nineteen fifty-seven law that requires Dare County to... to...
Right. So with the intercoastal waterway that runs all the way through the, the state in North Carolina, every federal project has a non-federal project sponsor. And the majority of the way that those dredged, or those navigation projects were written was that the Corps would go through the process of, of getting the channel authorized. The Corps would, with whatever the funding mechanism was or whatever the cost sharing was, would, would pay for the maintenance of those. But usually written into that cost sharing agreement, that project partnership agreement, I think is what they call them, was a stipulation that the local sponsor was responsible for providing locations for dredge material disposal to, you know, to be placed. And so the state of North Carolina right now is struggling that, with that to try to figure out, now that the, the initial sites that were set up for the intercoastal waterway during the initial construction and even a lot of the ones that have been used for maintenance for 50-some years, they're starting to fill up more and more. The Corps at some point in the last couple of years, the, the alarm bell was rung that, hey, you've got a lot of little mom-and-pop dredge operators that are placing material in our facilities. And once they're filled up, all this other land, even though we may have easements for this land, a lot of it's been developed and there's no way we're going to be able to place material in there. You need to cut it off and, and, you know, no one other than the Corps can, can place in these sites. And so that really got a lot of people in the state thinking about this. The, the long story short, though, what Commissioner Tobin was bringing up was that my understanding is that a lot of the, or some of the federal channels in Dare County, including the Manio to Oregon Inlet Channel, the state is not the non-federal sponsor for that project. The county of Dare is the non-federal sponsor for that project. And so the county of Dare is the one that's responsible for coming up with, in the future, dredge disposal options for the Corps in order for them to continue maintaining whatever responsibilities they'll maintain with maintaining navigation.
And I, I'd like to add to that. I can say that at the MOA meetings, speaking with a lot of other counties, there's a little bit of grumbling going on because the county is the person or the entity that's responsible for supplying the disposal area for the Corps to dispose stuff on. And yet now the Corps is saying, the county cannot dispose any of their non-federal county dredge material in those areas that the county has supplied.
What?
So that's their stance right now, though. There's been some pushback on it, but pushing back on the Corps takes time. In the meantime, I think we need to come up with some other solutions. I think this is pretty important.
How serious is this in terms of, I guess there's two quads. It's really an important strategic issue or it's an urgent now really serious issue?
No.
It feels like it's a longer-term strategic important issue, but not in the next, not in the next six, 12 months.
It's long-term. It's common.
It's something that the Corps came to us back in the winter and said, hey, y'all need to start looking at this. At the same time, the state's looking at this from a bigger picture and they've got a multi-year inventory coming, but not a solution coming. In the meantime, we've talked with Ken to figure out what we need to do. We've, we've got the shallow bag bay problem where the problem we're trying not to have with future problems, we have. And that is, what are we going to do with the spoil? We're working on that. We've got some ideas and options. None of them are great options. The best of our options is not the ideal option.
Fair.
And, and so the, the goal is not to run into those problems a year from now, five years from now, when one of these channels needs dredging and then it takes us two more years to figure out where to put it or where to get. And then all of a sudden, we've taken an emergency and created a two-year emergency when it could have been a matter of months if we had sites. And so that's where we are. We don't have anything out there urgent, ready to go, ready to dredge, even a project that somebody's itching to do or anything like that that we know about. But we got to do this sometime. From my perspective, if we assume that it has to be done, it becomes a timing issue and a funding issue. While in the big picture, I guess it's not a huge amount of money, but if we're going to take it out of our contingency, then it's about 20% of the contingency that we're taking out in month one of the budget. And I've got a little bit of trepidation about taking that much money out this early, not knowing what's going to occur the rest of the year. And so we're kind of balancing that. Ken would tell you, and I'll put words in your mouth, you know, if we wait a year to do it, then we're a year behind the curve and, you know, can we wait a year? Well, it depends on how long before we need to do dredging and nobody knows the answer to that question. And so that, that's kind of where we are. You know, and so again, two, two issues for you is, one, do we have the board understanding that we need to do this and we need to spend this money sometime? If the answer to that is yes, then the next question is, you know, when do we do it? Do we wait till later in the year, see what happens, see our contingency fund flows? Do we wait until the next budget cycle and budget it in? Or do we just go ahead and spend it now and we'll take our chances at the end of the year that we'll be all right? I don't really, your, your guess is as good as mine on all of those things. If, you know, you know, the middle ground is say, okay, yes, we're going to do this. Let's monitor the contingency fund and as we get later in the year, if nothing comes up, do it then. And if we have a chiller go out or something, then we'll wait and budget it in the budget next year. I mean...
And I, I personally think it's kind of a, a multi-level issue too because the Corps sites, they, they claim are becoming full. So we are under a contractual obligation to the Corps to supply a place to dispose of federal channel dredge material. But the county has, needs to have its own place to dispose of materials that the county would come up with. So really what we need to do is find a site or two that we can say, okay, Corps, this is your half and this is our half. You can't stop us from pumping into our half ever.
I like that.
And one other component of this that we have to take into account, this is the study.
Yes.
And the recommendations from the study, I mean, do we have to acquire a site? Do we, do we have to buy land to do this on? Do we have to rent it? You know, what, there's going to be some cost component to implementing whatever comes out of this and we don't have any idea what, what that is. And so there's another planning function. We just went through the capital improvement fund. Is this something that we've got to now plug into that and move something else around depending on, you know, what those needs are? Again, too early to tell, but that's the long-term ramifications of all this.
At this, at this point, our, our study is proposed to be a six-month study. So you'd be looking at finishing this up somewhere around February. You'd be kind of right in the middle of budgeting season if there was something, you know, between what the Corps may tell you or between other projects that come up. You know, I know that, that Rodanthie project, the ferry project down there wasn't really on anybody's radar, you know, three months ago, four months ago. So something may come up, but we're looking, you know, at a six-month horizon, what would put you around that timeframe for finishing that up. And then our understanding and talking to the Division of Water Resources is that this planning study is something that, you know, that, that would be on Dare County to develop this plan. But once we move into actual permitting and design of specific sites, then those costs would be, you know, you could apply for cost sharing through the Division of Water Resources through their shallow draft fund.
Does DWR have any grant, grant money for projects such as this?
I don't know. I was talking with Brent Johnson, the, the new grants and waterways guy, this afternoon a little bit. And a good guy, knows his stuff for sure. But he's actually, we actually talked about a number of different, you know, looking at different grants through the state that might be for, you know, on, on the outskirts of, of other benefits that we've talked about here as far as resilience or water access, those sorts of things, maybe some grant funding that, you know, could help fund parts of this study or, or, you know, future efforts to acquire land, things like that.
I'd like to bring something up here. You know, if, if there's partnership opportunities even with DOT, you know, when they were wrapping up the Rodanthie Bridge, that runs down close to our spoil site. There's behind the fillings, the island convenience there. That, what's going to happen with that is kind of up in the air. But, you know, I, I think it's those kind of things we, if we do this study, those are the kind of things, while we're doing the study, we're also looking forward to where we're going to do it. And there might be some opportunities with state-owned land down on Hatteras, outside of Buxton Woods. I'm not sure how much they have with proximity to water, talking specifically about DOT, but, you know, that's kind of a compelling site. If it's ruled out, it's ruled out. But we haven't really been able to figure out what's going to happen with that stretch from the Rodanthie Bridge over toward the emergency ferry. Right, so it has some potential. It, it may not fit, but it'd be nice to kind of look that property over.
With regard to the funding, Bobby, is there any concern in the, in the contingency with regard to storm season? Would that be something we would need to wait on or hold off on or not? That not an issue?
That's a different plug.
I thought your middle ground analogy was pretty good there. If that's the way we would want to go, that's not a, it's, it's a yes, but it's not, it's, it's a prudent path.
I, I agree 100% with Bobby on it. It's not so urgent that we need to go into our contingency fund and, and stretch that out at this point, I don't think.
So if that's the consensus of the board, then we'll come back to you and say, December, and say, okay, here's where we are. What do you think?
Yeah, yeah. Let's get, get us through hurricane season first. Make sure we don't get major storms.
That's what I was thinking. Once we get through October, it's pretty, I mean, chances of a severe emergency go way down.
Right. I think the general consensus is we want to do it, we just don't want to do it right now.
Sure. Don't bite too much of that apple off month one.
Thank you, Ken.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Appreciate it.
Put that on your calendar.
Okay. We'll do.
Yeah, Ken, let's see if we can brainstorm on maybe some grant money too.
Okay.
And we can talk to Colley about that too.
Okay.
Chair, next on the agenda is the Water Capital Improvement Plan for 2020 through 26. And David and Pat Irwin are here to make that presentation.
David? All right. Well, two meetings ago, you had the, you approved the, the General Capital Improvements Fund. This is the one that's just specific to the water operation, to what we call utilities. Dorothy's handed out, there's three things in there. One's just this PowerPoint. The, the second item attached in two meetings ago, when we adopted the General CIP, you know, Pat and his guys did everything they needed to do. And I said, we were a little bit behind because of me and the capital investment fund, but we were also waiting to finish the second attachment. And this is just a letter that relates to what we do every year. It's called the Water Rate Model. And it's, it's a lot like that capital investment fund, except it uses water consumption data and projects out both future water rates, cash balances, fund balances, and the water CIP. We've been doing that, gosh, since 1999 with Raftella's Financial Consulting. It, it includes, and I'm not going to spend any time on them, but page, these are liftables out of the model itself, but page three, we always get five years' worth of what they say we need projected increases in water rates are. We get a comparison on page four to both the CPI and what the American Water Works Association says that the average utility water rate increases have been. So you can see in the early 2010 through 14, the average was around 6%.
David, I'm sorry. What page are we looking at?
Page four.
The hand, the letter, the second attachment of the, of what Dorothy handed out. We're, we've historically run three to, somewhere between 2 and 3% a year. The fifth page shows what's called revenue. We also project out revenue bond coverage. That's related to the debt for the water system, which is not backed by a deed to trust or anything or a taxing power. It's just the revenue flow. And we have to covenant that that revenue flow on, really on a cash basis, will be 1.5 times what the debt payment is. We maintain, have maintained, and it's projected to stay over 2 instead of 1.5. And then really the thing that relates to the Capital Improvement Plan is on the sixth page, it projects out all the fund balances for the water fund. And those different fund balances are dictated by the revenue bond documents. So you've got to have restricted fund balance, which we're not allowed to touch unless we go out of compliance with the bond covenants. E and R, which for waters, extension and replacement, that's the capital portion of the fund balance, and then total. Their water ratings are a little bit different. They look at coverage and right now they look at, at how much cash you have on hand and how much you could meet, say, a water plant emergency that could cost $5 or $10 million in a shot, in one shot. The last page, the third portion of what Dorothy handed out is what's in your agenda packet, which is the actual capital improvements plan. I think it's page 43 in your agenda packet. It's 14 million, almost $14.5 million of projects over five years. It's all Pago, which we learned previously does, means not debt. We maintain revenue bond coverage for all the years in, on the sec, excuse me, but on the second, the very bottom of that page, these are the projected fund balances and the revenue bond coverage is pulled directly out of the model. Then we take that model that was just finished in July and put in this new capital improvements plan, and we're able to see what happens over time with, if we do these projects in these years. So we maintain the extension and replacement fund. It actually goes up a little bit from 14.2 million to 15.3. And the total fund balance moves from 27.6 to 28.9. And it's the same process as we do with, I need the PowerPoint up. It's the same process that we do with the capital investment fund. We update this every year. And I'm going to skip forward. Pat's going to briefly talk about the projects that are included.
David wanted me to go over a few of the larger projects that we have in the capital improvements. And the first one is a $4.85 million automatic meter reading AMR project that we have ongoing. Right now, we, we've already have Stumpy Point's complete, Salvo is complete, I have about 400 meters in Hatteras Village. And then with this next year, we are going to move to Collington Harbor and Collington Road with about 2,400 meters going in there, this year's portion of the project. I wanted to show you briefly on the presentation, we chose the Camstrup ultrasonic meters. And on the left, what we did, most of Dare County is at sea level or below, so we're very, very wet. And a lot of these automatic meters have wires attached. Well, the Camstrups don't. They're all incorporated into the body of the meter. So we wanted to test them out. We did put some meters in tandem at Commissioner Overman's house and at the county manager's house. We ran those in tandem for accuracy with our regular meters and they proved to work very, very well. But we are still worried about being able to read in the wet conditions. So what we did, we took a five-gallon bucket on your left picture. We filled it up with water. We took that meter that we show in the center and put it in the bottom of that bucket and filled it with sand. And then we took a cast iron lid, put it on top of the bucket. And then on the right-hand picture, we covered it completely in sand. And we were able to read that meter with a drive-by vehicle at 100 yards. So we were convinced then that the...
Was it saltwater? Was it Pamlico Soundwater that you put in there? Or was it...
Actually, well, no, it was fresh drinking water. It wasn't. But to tell you the truth, I, in working in another county, we did have ocean overwash there and they, you can't read when they're covered with water, but once the water receded, the meters held up very well.
Well, plastic, yeah, plastic buckets pretty well non-corrosive regardless of what water's in it.
Yes.
All right.
All right. And then moving forward, also, one of our larger projects is going to be at the north, reverse osmosis plant, Kildeble. is gonna be at the North Reverse Osmosis Plant, Kildalb Hills. That plant started in 1989, it's 30 years old. And the three original 1 million gallon a day, I'm sorry, David. The three originals, 1 million gallon a day treatment skids need to be replaced. So that'll be done this upcoming year in 2020. We're gonna replace those skids. And then along with that, we have a nano filtration plant at Skyco. And we're gonna be, finish that project. Right now, they have three 1 million gallon a days nano filtration treatment skids. And we're gonna add two more to make it a complete 5 million gallon a day. And the regional system then will be able to make 10 million gallon a day of all membrane water.
Do those skids come in all assembled?
Yes, they do. But the ones that we have at the NRO, they're gonna have to assemble them in place. Because, you know, the first thing you do, you build your pad, you put your skids in, then you put your sides up. So, yeah. So they'll, they'll be able to. In fact, we're gonna have to chop them up, what's left of them, and they'll have to bring in the new skids. The third page just shows the maintenance that we're gonna do. It's totally gonna be $1.28 million. And we are gonna be doing all of the elevated storage tanks from Duck all the way down through Hatteras Village. And all the numbers and the fiscal years that they're included are on that slide. So those are the major portions of the project. And thanks to Dave and his, oh, we have one more, I'm sorry. The next page. Dave, you got it? The next page, yes. Our supervisory control and data acquisition SCADA control units is gonna be about a half a million dollars, and that's gonna be in 2021. And of course, that's what controls everything. We can turn pumps on and off from Kildalb Hills that are down on Hatteras Island at this time. We have control from there. We know all our tank levels and our towers come on automatically. And this system also controls all of the systems at the plants that monitor the water treatment as we go through it. So that's the major projects. And thanks to David and his, and his model, we are able to, to have the funds available to us.
I sit on a commission called the Albemaro Commission. And by coincidence, this past Thursday, we had a representative from a firm called Aqua. I don't know if that name means anything to you or not.
Sure, it's a, it's a private water treatment company.
Yeah, they basically-
Countrywide.
They were presenting a pitch where they would buy the water systems of local municipalities that were, quote, "in trouble." And they would provide the appropriate maintenance or upgrades or whatever, I guess, in exchange for purchasing all the future revenue stream from all the customers paying their monthly water bills. Have I got that right?
Yes, that's correct.
They also quoted numbers that were staggering in terms of across the state of North Carolina. And again, they weren't pitching us to, to sell them anything. They were sort of doing an informational, this is what we do. But the infrastructure spending needed, as they were talking about the state, was staggering in the billions and billions of dollars of water systems. And it caught my attention, obviously. And I made a note to come back and ask you guys, and voila, here we are. How would you rate the state of our ci, I mean, it looks like with these planned maintenance and upgrades, all would be well under control in Dare County. Have I got that right?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We've been able, through great accountability, to maintain our plans. Like I said, the North RO plant right now is already 30 years old. We're changing out the three original skids that were in there. We have two skids that were put in in about the mid 2000s that are still fine. RWS Water in Rhodanthi was 1995. And it looks like it was, seriously, it looks like it was just done a few years ago. It's been so well-maintained. Cape Hatteras, the same way. I mean, the plants are all very well-maintained.
We get Laurie's reports every week. And I mean, they're real, the reports she sends out. And there's a lot of, that just backs up your contention that we are well-maintained. And I, I read those things. And we're in good, privatization of water, I mean, good form, but, you know, we do a good job with our water. We'll let somebody else worry about that.
And it relates to what Commissioner Ross said, is it what systems they're looking at and whether or not there's an opportunity there. The presentation you saw with the Carter's, your water system rating is that AA1, the same as Brunswick. It's actually higher than the GO rating. And that maintenance and infrastructure is part of what they look at as well.
Yeah, I had no concerns at all. It's just that this guy kinda lit up our Albemaro Commission, and I thought I'd come back and-
It's muddy and water.
Yeah, Aqua, Aqua and Carolina Water usually go into small communities and do, and that's the majority of the work.
Right, they showed a map of their coverage, and the entire northeast of North Carolina was blank. There was nothing, nowhere.
Those, those places have no capital and no ability to raise capital.
Right.
And they're different.
That's what it sounded like, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, what we're asking you to do is approve this Water CIP. There's a capital project ordinance included to approve. There's a budget amendment for the water fund to approve, and a budget amendment for the Water Capital Reserve Fund to approve. And as you recall, but a year ago, we had to set up that reserve fund to account for impact fees based on new state law.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a motion to do so?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Ross, seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? I would just, this is kind of for aesthetic sake. These water towers that we have are a great way for us to promote ourselves. I know we've got our county seal on them and everything, but when you look at our Native American heritage there with Chickmaconoco on that plant, Hatteras, Skyco, it's just a nice way to revisit our heritage here and, you know, rent out, sustain what has made us who we are. But also, you know, we could probably, I ju, I just think it's something we need to look at down the road. I mean, what, with, with the opportunities, with the paint schemes on these towers. They don't need to be bland vanilla structures. We can, you know, dress them up a little bit. Sounds good. Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes. You have the Health and Human Services, Public Health Division additional funding for the WIC program. You have a resolution authorizing the conveyance of the Dare County Water Department equipment to the town of Kildalb Hills. You have a reimbursement resolution for Series 2020, limited obligation bonds, to add EMS equipment for the 2020 approved CIP. The tax collector's report, a budget amendment for the state appropriation for the dredge forgivable loan, and a request for additional, addition to state-maintained secondary road system for Carolina Court West.
Move to approve. Motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bateman, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, that'd be your agenda.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item 10, and that's commissioner's business and manager attorney business. Commissioner Tobin, would you mind kicking it off?
Sure. We had Oregon Inlet Task Force meeting a couple of weeks ago, and Pablo was able to attend. He's been really busy with the demolition project there on the Bonner Bridge. And it was really nice having him there. It was really nice being able to thank him for the great job that they had done building it, building the new Fastnight Bridge. But I know in our discussion at one of the meetings, we, we had talked about the exclusion zone for fishing from the bridge. And at this past meeting, he said that demolition was not going as rapidly as they thought it would, and that there would be a strong, or not that there would be, there is a very strong possibility of an extension in time of 12 to 18 months for demolition.
Wow.
That will include the 100-yard exclusion zone on both sides of the Bonner Bridge. And it will still include all of the Bonner Bridge footprint.
What was the original length of time they, an estimate?
A year. A year.
A year, adding a year and a half to the year.
Yeah, they're, they're, yes.
They're running- What's the issue? Jacking the pines out?
Well, and the, the, the part of the bridge, the draw of the bridge that's left right now, all the way to land, they were hoping to be able to get it from the water. And as of right now, they can't because it's, it's shoaled in. So they're talking about the possibility of having to, to build another temporary structure going out that they can operate off of. All of that stuff is still undecided. They're still kicking the can down the road on, on making a decision exactly how they're gonna do it. Also, taught, the, one thing that they talked about is the remainder of the bridge on the south side that they're gonna leave before they actually open that part of the bridge up to the public. They're gonna do some repair work, and just to make sure that the bridge is totally 100% safe and that gives it more longevity, too. So they're, they're taking the right course on it. It's just taken longer than suspected. And they're about ready to do a couple lifts of piles that are totally unknown as to how that's gonna go.
Yeah.
So far, they've taken out solid piles. Now they're, now they're taking out these massive piles that are hollow. So they've got-
60, what'd he say?
They've got surface area, 60 inches. They've got surface area on both sides, so-
I take it, everything they're doing is brand-new technology and technique on this project. It's never been done before.
Well, pumping the normal piles out's not, that's, they do that a lot. But yes, on this particular-
Cause kinda missing your original estimate by a year and a half would imply we're cutting edge.
Well, that's because, mostly that's because it's shoaled in, though. The pile, the piling removal of where they can get to is going pretty good.
Jim, on, on that area that's north of the whole span, if it's shoaled in that badly, why not just leave it? Just close the road off and leave it?
Make it a nature walkway.
I don't know, just close it off.
I'm with you.
I mean, I don't-
Dynamite works, too.
Yeah, exactly, I mean-
I don't know. Cause I, I don't know. I really don't know.
Well, that's, that's kinda, that's on the contractor.
I mean, it's shoaled, it's shoaled, and if it continues to show like it is, another year to be dry.
Actually, it's eroded some right now, but it hasn't eroded like it has in the past, so.
Ain't going through winter yet, either.
Yeah. So anyway, I just thought I'd give you an update on that. I knew it was an interesting topic that we covered. And really, that's all I got.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, sir. A couple of things. Tomorrow is a very big day. The school convocation ceremony at First Flight High School. If you've not been to this thing, this is worth seeing and visiting. It starts with a lunch at 11:30, and then Superintendent Farley and his entire team and all the teachers and staff, it is a heck of a kickoff to the new school year. I will plan to be there, and it's outstanding. I would recommend all of us attend if we can. Last week, if we can pull up on the screen, several of us were able to get to Washington, DC. Commissioner Couch and I, Vice Chairman Overman, and County Manager Outen. And I had the big reveal here that never happened. The timing didn't work. Dorothy, you promised me.
Dorothy, Dorothy, Dorothy.
I'm kidding, Dorothy.
He's got it, he's got it.
The big reveal. On your screens.
Here it comes.
Do you want to know what the National Weather Service beat forecast is?
Hatteras Island Rescue Squad. Matt was not on the trip to Washington with us. But those four guys were including me. And it was a very, very informative trip. And from the presentations from those in the federal government agencies, I would concur that moving the United States Army Corps of Engineers is very slow and difficult. The representative from the Corps-
The big guy.
Personified, slow, intransigent, unwilling, inflexible. The others were all pretty darn good. But it was a very informative conference, and I would urge next year to all of us, if we can get there, it was, it was great. And we also had a morning session on legislative agenda with NACO, National Association of Counties, that was equally informative. And we found that NACO headquarters, for any time we are in DC, is available at no charge as a sort of floating office that we can use to sort of group, spend some time, do some research, whatever we need to. So that was very helpful as well. I'm working with County Manager Outen and Chrissy Rothrock, our acting director of the shelter, on revising and correcting some wording and language in the ordinances, especially as it relates to our animal control officers and their ability to execute and carry out those ordinances, as on occasion, we have some citizens that are a little less willing to cooperate in executing those ordinances with animal control. So thank you, County Manager Outen. You were helpful for us on the phone that day when we called you to assist us. I will be meeting with the Albemaro Commission financial team and executive director on September 19th to do a little bit of a financial tutorial, as it were. We're gonna work on presentation and analysis so that the 14 members of the board will be better able to understand and digest some of the financial activities at Albemaro Commission. As everybody remembers, we spend a lot of time and money on workforce development, area agency for aging, on planning, or, excuse me, on congregate meals, meals on wheels. And the associated budgeting and spending gets a little tangled. So I'm gonna try and do some work with them on that date, the 19th. And finally, on a personal note, I got a letter from Judge Jerry Tillot today. Gotta go to jury duty.
You got an easy out.
So what, but I just-
You don't have to, how old are you? How old are you? You get out because you age.
They may kick you. No, I will be doing that on October 6th. So I've not served on a jury before, so we'll see if that turns out as, as exciting as I'm sure it will be.
You've never served on a jury?
Never served on a jury in my life. So this will be a first time.
Well, I know some potential defendants are gonna be a big problem.
I don't know, Superior Court here across the parking lot.
I, I, I served on this, on the, I had to serve for a solid year.
On the grand jury?
Grand jury.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like being sentenced.
You, you can get out of it, Rob, based on age, I think.
Yeah, it took a lot of time, I'm sure.
Say what, Mr. Commissioner?
Well, good luck. Wait, October what, 3rd?
October 6th.
October 6th, okay.
October 6th. I have to phone in the night before to see if I'm actually needed. So I will, I will make the call that night.
Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was trying to check my schedule when we were talking earlier about the Workforce Housing Work Day for September 16th. I will be out of town that week. I'll be more than happy to, I think, on that particular day. The seminar that I'm attending, I will have a free time that afternoon. So I will be more than happy to call in if that picks up.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll set it up so you can be able to do that.
That'd be great. This past Wednesday, we had the Dare County Working Watermen's Commission meeting. And we had the privilege and honor of having the North County Director of Marine Fisheries, Steve Murphy, was there. We had a very, just about all members of the commission were there. Two members were absent. One was out, actually out fishing. The other one was actually at a fishing council meeting in DC. But also, along with the commission, we had approximately 20 to 25 people from the public there and was able to speak. He, he listened to our concerns over the shrinking petition and also the amendment, too, for the flounder fishing. And of course, as him being a director, he's under, under the, the guide of whatever the commission puts up, puts out to him. But he was very keen on, on listening to what our concerns were. One of the things that was brought up, not only by myself, but a couple of other people in the, in the, in the audience there, and he took it to heart, was the fact of whenever these restrictions come into place, that the economic impact on most of these things are determined or, or go as far as the impact of that commercial fishing, fishermen and that fish house. And that's as far as it goes. And we were trying to portray to him that it doesn't just affect that fisherman and that fish house, it affects that whole entire community. And for them to dig deeper into, into doing that, that part of any of the economic impact. And he took that to heart. And he took that to heart and I think we'll see something, uh, later on, uh, with any, any of these other proposals coming out. With that being said, North County Marine Fisheries Commission will hold their meetings, uh, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of this week. Uh, public comment starts on Wednesday at six o'clock and will resume again on Thursday morning, I believe, at nine o'clock. Um, I do plan on, uh, attending, uh, for Wednesday night. Hopefully I'll get, get enough time to speak and I will be presenting, uh, both of our resolutions that we have against those two, uh, items on, on their agenda and speaking on, uh, a few facts and, uh, of the fishing industry for those two, two areas as far as the flounder fish and also for the, uh, shrinking petition. As far as, uh, we were talking about Dare County history with the, uh, coin jock, oh, the coin jock, geez. Uh, Jockeys Ridge, um, August eighteenth, fifteen eighty-seven.
Yeah, I remember it well.
Miss Virginia Dare was born. And, uh, I didn't want that to go by without, without, uh, us commemorating that in, in our history. A little bit closer in history, uh, today, August nineteenth, nineteen oh nine was the first running in Indianapolis five hundred. And I'm sure, Bob, I'm sure you were there. Even closer to that, since we've talked a lot about finances today, as far as, uh, CIP and, and, uh, everything there. Google stock went public on this day in two thousand and four. It opened today's trading at eighty-five dollars a share, closed that same day at a hundred dollars and thirty-four cents a share. As of this afternoon, that same share is now worth one thousand, two hundred and three dollars and sixteen cents.
Woo, wish I'd have bought some.
You should have bought some, I could do that one. So with that, that's all I've got now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chairman. I didn't have no money then, I ain't got no.
I'd be lucky to buy one share.
Looks like you would have brought some birthday cake for.
Virginia Dare was in your share.
That's right, that's right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bevan.
Yeah, Bob, spinning off what you said about the surfing with autism.
Oh, yeah.
I've been there two, three, uh, times and it's very heartwarming. If you guys ever got time to stop by the Jeanette Spear, when they have it, it's a very heartwarming thing. You know, little kid, they're not necessarily, um, skittish, but it's a unique thing for them. And to see them go out there and the guys pushing mail on the surfboard, mom and daddies are happy. And after a while, the kids get used to it and it's a heartwarming kind of thing they do. Great event and it brings awareness to, um, autism. Um, I had an opportunity, uh, many, many years ago when my wife was a early childhood and exception children's director, uh, to work along her with some kids and, um, it's a trip. And so, I mean, it's, it's, they're, they're very, very sweet kids.
Yes.
It's a great thing. The governor's numbers, uh, from last year, two thousand and eighteen, take in consideration too, that also was with us being closed down for Florence. We lost six days of revenue right in the middle of September. And, and we lost all that money. Nobody could spend any money at Dare County but the thirty-five thousand residents we have. And, um, and when they, even when they came back, they didn't come back in the, in the masses.
Yeah, it was a hangover.
That they were here before. So, this year, if we can get through in those storms, we're gonna pick up that six days. And then also, um, you know, and we can't forget Michael. Michael came through the storm that wasn't supposed to be and that slapped a lot of folks and, and pick up sales from those days too and sales tax for those days, so. Hats off to, um, Mary Helen Murphy on the bike, um, multi-trail down there. Um, having been and working along to do bike paths years and years ago, for instance, the one in Martin's Point. You know, they couldn't apply for a, um, multi-use path there because of the fact on that side of the road, they weren't an entity. So they came to the town of Kitty Hawk and we applied for the thing for them. These guys down there in the county, they can't apply for tourist bureau money and so forth because they're within the county and they have no entity apply for them. So your work is big and I appreciate all you're doing down there and I'm, I know the residents do too. Thank you.
Good deal, thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Couch?
Yeah, just to follow up on, uh, what Irvin's saying about, uh, the, uh, scenic byway committee's ability to go out and find stuff. It really is an amazing thing where they've been able to go out and make this happen and, uh, you know, when these paths get going, we have the connection there, it's really gonna be a testimony. I think a lot of people, if you'd have said, you know, ten years ago or, or a little bit further beyond that this would be a reality, they probably, there'd be some skepticism. So, hats off for making it work. Also, uh, you know, August nineteenth also is, oh, Orville Wright's birthday today. Cause, uh, yeah, August nineteenth, big day here. And, uh, in terms of what, just to follow up a little bit on what I was talking about there with the, uh, paint schemes. It's not to spend a whole lot of money on them, but, you know, we, we have a lot of lost colony heritage here. If you wanna look around and just see, uh, you know, even Croatan, we have it writing, you know, where that was the name of the southern end of Hatteras, the dogleg of Hatteras. So, I, I like what we do, holding on to our heritage here. Hard names to spell. If you ever want to end the spelling bee, come to Dare County. Chico McComico.
That's right.
Yeah, Chack and Depico. But, uh, that, that's all I was saying on that. And, uh, very proud, uh, I, I wanna salute this board and, and particularly the chairman and, and Steve and every, everybody wanted to be on that, workforce housing, that essential housing, but, you know, you, you, we, we just can't. So, you guys, you got to get on it, uh, I salute you for doing so. And I think that's a great idea for the, uh, uh, little workshop there, uh, uh, because we, we're all in consensus on this and I think good things are gonna come out of this. We're gonna rise up and we're gonna meet the challenge on this. I have no doubt that, uh, you know, we, when everything's said and done, we will have had a leadership role, big leadership role on that. And, uh, but, you know, you're looking at restaurants and stuff and, uh, just in, in Hatteras, uh, you know, I'm very acute to, uh, the problems they've got. I mean, you've got people that own restaurants in there and, I mean, they're bussing tables, they're, everybody's hiring. And, uh, you know, one of the things you gotta do, you gotta have a place for people to stay. And, uh, so I hope good things, i- i- if we could snap our fingers and make it happen and be ready for twenty twenty. But it, it's not, we know it's gonna be a little bit of a drawn out process, but at least those good vibes that are coming out of this, that we're working actively to solve a problem that has plagued us. It's been like the flu that won't go away, you know, for twenty some odd years or better here.
Yeah.
Uh, and we're, we're, we're dealing with it. And, uh, but that's really all I've got. I mean, everybody's busier and all get out down there. I had, uh, seemed to have a squall line that sat right over Rodanthe, it's low to begin with, but, you know, there's still a lot of water on the road down there and it's just, you know, it just kinda sat there, that boundary line. Uh, a lot of water in the rest of the villages as well, but you know what? It's putting people in the shops, so, good. I'll be looking forward to about this time next year, just like, uh, uh, everybody was saying, see what the stats say.
Well, they, uh, Commissioner, Superintendent Hallick, I wish that I said, meant, got him to mention something earlier, but they put out some, to, to, he put out some statistics just the other day that what, we got record visitation on Hatteras.
Eight percent.
Eight percent, up eight percent.
That's phenomenal, when you're talking about seven digit.
Yeah.
And we're up, uh.
He's up, he's up eight percent. It's incredible.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was huge.
Yeah.
So, um, y'all been slamming.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the passenger ferry has just been, you know, really, uh, I am, uh, not really amazed, but uh, the fact that our visitors, uh, they see it, we struggle with it, we fought, we overanalyzed it amongst ourselves, the stakeholders group there, and you know what? So, okay, okay, we rolled the dice and, I mean, they're just, I went over there on Friday with my wife for my anniversary and there were six seats left and that's a Friday, so, which is normally a weekday, so. Uh, we'll see what happens in twenty twenty, I think we're onto something with that. They've, they've done, they've done a good job.
That's a job, yeah.
Went straight to Howard's.
My wife drove the car.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll leave Thursday morning for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Don't want some, some of y'all wanna go with me, I won't be back until Sunday, but, uh, I'll be representing the board at, in, uh, at, at the national, annual, um, uh, uh, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Leave here Thursday morning, be back Sunday, so.
Yeah, our guys were very good. Wish I could. I said, I wish I could.
I bet you did. Uh, Guilford, so, um, at any rate, um. You ain't allowed to go there?
You, you can, you can salute, Bob. The, uh, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, they had a presence when we were there, their whole staff was there.
Oh, good.
At, at, uh, at the NACO buildings and, yeah, uh, there with, uh, we had a reception over at the, uh.
Well, I'm disappointed, cause I, I mean, I went last year and I'm disappointed y'all didn't have this vice president there. Uh, what happened? How, what, how come the vice president?
They got word you didn't show up.
Huh? Do what?
They got word you weren't coming.
Hey, I, that guy, Mulvaney, Mick Mulvaney, he's sharp, he is a.
He was a little above average, wasn't he?
Yes, he was.
I heard he was good.
I could listen to him all day.
Like a laser beam, Bob, like a laser beam. He was very, very strong, very strong.
Yeah.
Well, I encourage, I encourage those that haven't been to try to go next year. County Manager, what do you have for us?
Two things real quick. Our COA Scholarship Committee, uh, Ampiterra, Commissioner Tobin and Artie Tillot, we've been circulating, um, the scholarship agreement. I think we have that close to final form and hopefully we'll bring that to you all at either the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Great.
For your approval to get that thing going, um, we hope to get it in the schools and get the teachers, I mean, the counselors talking to the students and the parents to, to make that happen so that when they, those kids that are gonna go to, see the college to graduate early in, in the, in January can take advantage of what we're offering and everybody's real excited about that. The committee's worked hard to get that in a form that we all like. So that'll be coming to you soon, it's almost done and, uh, we should have that for you in one of the next two meetings.
Great, I'll be sure to, I have a trustee meeting tomorrow in Lisboa City, so I'll share that with the trustee.
We got the final draft, what, Thursday or Friday?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then, um, at the last meeting, you all asked me to put some heat on and find out what was going on with the stormwater plan in, in the north end. I got word back finally last week that they're expecting it from Moffett Nickel in mid-September. And so, as soon as we get that.
Twenty twenty, end of July.
Well, let me, let me just, let me just.
Get that, we'll share that with.
Let me just say this, I've had conversations with our, uh, representative from NC DOT and I shared, I contacted him latter part of last week wanting to know where it was at. And, uh, uh, he, he voiced his frustration with the company as well and, of course, they had an excuse about another project that they had going. But I let him know this is unacceptable and, and I've, I've had the, um, folks on Roanoke Island really hounded me hard.
Yeah, I understand.
I've had to, I've had to go to several of their meetings.
Bob, I remember the waiting we had last year.
We had five inches of rain the other day.
Yes, I had to, I had.
We were in that room with those guys and they promised.
Yeah, I'm not a happy camper and I let them know that, so. But it is, what it is, I, I don't know what we can do to step it up.
At this point, we're ninety-eight percent away.
Cause I was told, I was told on Friday that we would have it this week and now we get the email and Bobby's conversation that's gonna be middle of September. So, very frustrated.
Very, very good information about our friends at Moffett Nickel.
Anything else you can't imagine?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hester?
Well, the county manager mentioned the scholarship committee and I know that they're working hard to finalize those details. And, um, in talking with the chairman, one of the things, y'all know he's been going around doing the presentations, trying to make as many groups aware and so we had a conversation about ma- helping to let parents know about it. And as a parent, I, my, my daughter's grown now, but I know the beginning of the year is when you always pay attention to the paperwork, you know, that you get that. And so, um, the chairman asked that, and I, and asked me to speak to Dr. Farley about getting a letter from you all in their packets, their electronic packets, making them or letting them know about the opportunities at COA and especially the scholarship program. So, I have a letter, I'll read this if y'all don't mind.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It says, "Dear parent," and this is going out, I believe today was what, uh, Dr. Farley said in the packets. And I believe it's middle school and high school student parents. Um, "Dear parent, our greatest asset and hope for our future lies with our children. The Dare County Board of Commissioners has continued to follow through with commitments to funding Dare County schools to provide quality education for our children and ensure they can achieve at their highest potential. As you navigate the new school year and explore the opportunities available to your children, remember it is never too early to begin the conversation about postgraduate education and start planning for the expenses that come along with it. I'm excited to share with you valuable opportunities available for Dare County students to jumpstart their college and postgraduate education at no cost to your family. The dual enrollment program with COA provides students the opportunity to accumulate college credits, career and technical education training, certificates, credentials and even an associate degree prior to high school graduation at no cost. In June two thousand and eighteen, three Dare County seniors, one from each high school, graduated with their high school diploma and an associate degree from the College of the Albemarle. Associate degrees available at the COA Dare County campus are guaranteed to transfer to any of the seventeen UNC system universities. Career and technical education opportunities available include HVAC, oh, I'm sorry. In HVAC welding, marine diesel engine repair and more. For more information, you can contact your school counselor. In June, the, the Dare County Board of Commissioners pledged two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for tuition and fees to graduating seniors who enroll full-time at the College of the Albemarle in associate degree or technical programs. The Dare County Guaranteed Scholarship Program will cover all in-state tuition and fees not covered by financial aid or scholarship. It will also provide up to a thousand dollars per year for instruction required textbooks and software. The program is expected to launch in November. A scholarship committee is working to develop and establish guidelines and eligibility requirements. Once finalized, the de- details and information will be available at darenc.com/COA. Another opportunity available for graduating seniors is to apply to COA and ECU simultaneously and commit to maintaining full-time status. Upon completion of an associate degree at COA, they will seamlessly transition into degree completion programs at ECU. This program provides students and their families with two years of higher education, paid in full and a structured transfer path to ECU. Please encourage your children to take advantage of all the benefits a Dare County education has to offer and consider these fantastic opportunities and alternative pathways into postgraduate education. The Dare County Board of Commissioners remains vigilant to ensure the Guaranteed Scholarship Program is a success throughout Dare County. And don't hesitate to reach out with any thoughts or suggestions. And it's signed by the chairman, it's on y'all's letterhead. So, that, I think, I'm glad that we got that out. I hope that parents will pay attention and make, oh, bring awareness to the commitment that y'all have, have made.
Thank you, Dorothy. I had, uh, reached out to Superintendent Farley wanting to, um, get in front of them convocation wise, uh, Commissioner. And that's kind of a tough situation to put me on stage during that session, but I wanted to get to as many people as I can. They're doing something a little bit different, I wanted to get in front of parents. So they're not having that single meeting, they're having just parents come and go to the classroom. So I asked Superintendent Farley if I could, uh, develop a letter to get to the parents. And so with Dorothy's and Sarah's help, we, we put that together and he agreed to put that in the packet that's going out to the parents, so. And I'm, um, and I'm pleased to report that I gave my twentieth presentation on COA just last week and we still have more scheduled planned, so.
Bob, I think it's great that you included in that letter the transition between COA and ECU and the agreement that's there.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, we're paying for two years at ECU.
Right, yeah, absolutely, Jim, yeah.
Once, once it gets traction.
That's huge.
Yeah, it's gonna be real, it's gonna get real. Once, once it gets traction, yeah, it's gonna be real, it's gonna get real competitive. I, I hope.
So now, wow, you can get more Dare County Pirates.
That darenc slash COA, um, page is up, and of course, it says, we'll be, continue updating it as the committee finalizes and the board looks at, at those guidelines. I, just one more thing, um, I wanna show a quick video, I promise it's quick, and that's just to talk a little bit more about the work of Love the Beach, Respect the Ocean, which is really an informal partnership with, of the towns, the park service, the, um, lifeguards, the lifesaving groups down on Hatteras Island, everybody's come together, and I got an, an email from Superintendent Hallic, and he was just praising Skip and Sarah, and he said, "Skip and Sarah, thank you." Skip and Sarah work in, in the public relations department. They had completed a video about this partnership with Duck Donuts that was established this year, where if you, if a visitor subscribes to get those text alerts, they can show that they registered and go into Duck Donuts and get a free donut. And, um, he just thanked them for the ongoing efforts and to collaborate with everyone and improve communication, safety, and visitor experiences, so I thought it might be nice for y'all to see the latest video.
Do you want to know what the National Weather Service beach forecast is for your favorite beach before you head out?
Do you want to receive alerts of dangerous ocean weather conditions while you're at your favorite beach? Do you want a free donut?
Simply text JOINOBXBEACHCONDITIONS, all one word, to 30890.
And receive daily National Weather Service forecasts and safety alerts from area lifeguards and ocean rescue patrols. Show the staff at any Outer Banks Duck Donuts location your signed-up message and receive one free donut. It's best to know the beach conditions before you head out.
Text JOINOBXBEACHCONDITIONS, all one word, to 30890.
And receive the alerts that help ensure that your Outer Banks vacation is a memorable one for the right reasons. Love the beach, respect the ocean.
Yay. That was great.
Good. Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
I saw one recently, too, that Benny Baldwin did about rip currents, and it was hilarious. Did you see that? He had the mask on, he had the, he had the, it was, it was really, really good, and they were asking him correct questions about what you should do, what you shouldn't do. It was a, it was a quick, funny video, if you get chance, look it up, it's really, really funny, but it certainly gets the message across. Thank you, Dorothy. Dave, anything else for us to see?
Well, that brings us to a conclusion. Is there a motion to adjourn until 9:00 AM on September the 3rd?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner House, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Couch. All, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose like that. Motion carries now.